I will call the January 4, 2010, a meeting of the Anchorage Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Would the Secretary call the roll, please?
Rick Morrison. Nancy Pease. Jim Frederick. Connie Yoshimura.
Here.
Tony Jones.
Here.
Arthur Ischam.
Here.
John Weddleton.
Here.
Bruce Phelps. Stacy Dean.
Here.
We have a quorum. We don't have any minutes for approval this evening. We do have disclosures. Mr. Ischam.
Please, gentlemen, you disclose this evening. Thank you. Ms. Yoshimura?
Yes. As it relates to case number 2010-006, as it affects, and 2010-007, I would like to disclose that this property is adjacent to West Park subdivision, and there's been many negotiations back and forth regarding this particular piece of property. And I, in the past, owned a tract 4B in West Park subdivision, and I have partnership relationships, although it doesn't relate specifically to West Park, to two current owners in the West Park subdivision, as well as a 10-year ongoing business relationship with Huckquist Homes and White River Development. And under those circumstances, I think it would be appropriate for me to be recused.
Do you anticipate that whatever decision we make this evening would have an impact on the value of the property that you're involved in out there?
I am not currently involved in any property, although I have partnership relationships that own parcels in that subdivision that are adjacent to the Lucy pit.
Okay. So that's case...
Yeah. And Mr. Weddleton has made a motion.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think we need to vote on this one way or the other.
I need a second. By Ms. Pease. Oh, came...
I had a question, actually, before we...
You had a question?
Yeah. Commissioner Yoshimura, when we dealt with this previously regarding the school district site there, were you on the commission then?
I was.
And what did you, were you involved in that case?
I was recused.
You were accused in that case? Okay. Well, I'll support this motion.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
So you're supporting the motion to direct her to participate?
Oh, sorry. I will oppose the motion. Thank you.
Okay, so a yes vote, direct her to participate, and no vote, direct her not to participate. So please, I mean, there's going to be objections, so we need to use our machines, so...
Right. Right. That motion fails. Yes. So you will be excused, it looks like, from those two cases? Is that correct, Mr. Ischam?
Madam Chair, I believe I misunderstood what we were voting on. I apologize.
Okay, so did you intend to vote no?
What was the exact thing that we're voting on? Again, please.
To whether or not to direct her to participate. A yes vote would direct Ms. Yoshimura to participate, a no vote would excuse her from participating.
I apologize. I meant the no.
Can the Secretary record her vote accordingly? Correct it?
Therefore, Ms. Yoshimura is excused from cases G3 and 4.
Correct. And let the record reflect that Mr. Phelps has arrived.
Anything else, Ms. Yoshimura?
No.
Okay. Ms. Jones?
No.
Ms. Dean?
On D1, D is the resolution on the Anchorage Long Range Transportation Plan Amendment. I haven't been involved in that at all. I've continued to abstain from voting on that, too. I think I should, again, since I have interest there. And I just want to say that in case number 4, which is 2010-007, as a general contractor, I do dump debris at that property. So I don't know if that's relevant or not.
Okay. And which case was that? Where you dumped...
2010-007.
G4, 2010, yeah. -7. And I don't know if that's relevant or not.
I misunderstood. I didn't hear you.
Case number G4...
What was the reason?
Oh, we just have, I guess you could say, we have a financial, we buy space from them to dump our debris there, and I just wanted to say that I have somewhat of a relationship with Anchorage Santa Gravel there. That's all.
Okay. Would you anticipate that whether we approve or disapprove this night, would this impact you in any way financially?
If they don't extend it for us to be able to dump, it would negatively affect my business, definitely, if I was not able to dump there.
Do you have other places where you can dump?
It's more expensive.
More expensive. Okay. I think we'd better consider this one, and so if I'll accept a motion to...
I'll move to direct Commissioner Dean to participate.
Okay, I see a motion from Mr. Weddleton, and it's second.
Second from Ms. Yoshimura. Okay, since there's going to be objection on this, we'll use our machines. Basically, a yes vote directs Ms. Dean to participate, and a no vote excuses her from participation. Please use your machines.
Are you, Mr. Weddleton, are you directing her to participate?
You know, that was my intent, but I think the machine showed that Commissioner Pease made the motion, and that's fine.
Are you getting the vote already?
Okay, so you're directing her to participate?
Yes.
Okay.
Looks like I am.
So that moved... Okay.
Did you vote with the vote?
Yep. I'm going to do it twice now.
Okay. Well, we got it that time.
Okay. You're excused from that particular one.
Now, we will be joining those cases for public hearing purposes, but we will be taking action singly, so you will just not participate in action on that case, because you only have this situation with case G4.
G3, as far as I know, has not started allowing people to dump there, so I don't know if their plan is that at all, so...
Point of order. These are, you know, related ones require, what is asking to shut down, put in the balance its operations in order to fill out another site. So technically, in Ms. Dean's case, they are related. As far as whether or not her financial hardship, they would relate to both, and she could be, if she was to be recused from one, she should technically be recused from both, because they are very, very directly, you know, related as to the dumping of materials that she was talking about, that her operation does.
Mr. Weddleton, you want to make an additional motion? I think that probably makes sense.
Mr. Weddleton?
I move that Commissioner Dean be directed to participate in, which one would that be, then?
That would be 2010-06.
2010-06, as well as 07.
And that was seconded by no one just yet?
Right. Didn't I hit the button here?
Uh-uh.
Saw Commissioner Ischam's name.
I thought Mr. Ischam had seconded, but he's running the show.
Yeah, I can't.
And no, you can't come up and talk. Just have a chair, Mr. Potter. It'll be okay.
I'm showing, I showed him seconding, but it's not showing on my screen. And it's not showing that Mr. Weddleton made a motion either, so there's something wrong with my screen. You didn't say it before.
Okay. Well, it's okay. So, did you second it, Mr. Ischam?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so I guess we start voting.
Okay. Again, a yes vote directs Ms. Dean to participate in both cases, and a no vote excuses her from participation.
Yeah, it shows me it's coming up as being absent, which perhaps I am, but I'll do it again.
We're having really bad technology problems tonight.
I had a chance to rerun the roll call, and he voted last time, and this time it should be different.
If it does it wrong one more time, I'm going to start doing voice call votes.
Bruce, we can either vote again, or you can just tell me how you voted. Okay. Okay.
Now you need to announce it, since I can't see it.
Five no's and one yes.
Okay, therefore she is excused.
From both cases.
Anything else to disclose, Ms. Dean? Ms. Dean, anything else to disclose? Thank you. Mr. Phelps? No. Mr. Weddleton?
Just as a disclosure, on D3 and G1, I'm friends and acquaintances with representatives for Grayling Land Development, but I would not expect to be recused based on that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the disclosure. And I have nothing to disclose.
Thank you. Before we get into the consent agenda, I want to make a couple of announcements the way we're going to handle the agenda tonight. We're going to be combining some cases. We are going to combine item 3A, that's on the consent agenda, under site and landscape plans. This is a non-public hearing item, and it is the commercial tract, case number S11780. Grayling Land Development is the petitioner. And we're going to combine, for the purposes of action, we will hold a public hearing on G1, 2009-156, Grayling Land Development LLC. This is the site plan review for an office retail complex. The way this will work is that there will be no staff presentation on the item for the site plan review. We administratively make our decision on that based on the information in the packet, and if commissioners have questions of staff before we take action, we can ask staff questions about that case. But that is not a public hearing item. The G1, the site plan review, is a public hearing item, and I will announce the rules for that case when it's up on the agenda. Then we will also combine cases G3 and G4 for purposes of public hearing. They're the same petitioner, they're in the same area, and there will be a small adjustment to the time allowed for your public testimony on those two matters, but we will hear both those cases at the same time, and then take action on those separately. My, I would ask the commissioners to perhaps entertain the possibility, after we complete case 2, to consider making an agenda change with regard to case 5. I don't know how many, how many people are here to testify on case G5? Perhaps we could move that up before cases G3 and G4, which would allow Ms. Yoshimura and Ms. Dean to go home, and not have to sit around all evening. One, two, three, five. We will still have a quorum, but barely, so Mr. Potter will have a decision to make with regard to those two cases.
Do you like that decision?
Yes.
We would like to go ahead, but it would be nice to be able to chat about just a commercial shopping type of relationship as a consumer that I believe Ms. Dean has rather than a conflict, so that would be...
Well, that, we've resolved that, according to our edicts.
You voted.
Okay. Thank you for weighing in. So we will go ahead with our consent agenda now, and...
Madam Chair, move for approval of the consent agenda. Items D1, A, B, C, D, E, and 3A.
Not 3.
Okay, and I have a second from Mr. Weddleton. Okay, Ms. Pease?
Madam Chair, I'd like to pull D1A, D1E, and if I heard correctly, I thought that 3A was also to be held until we discuss the companion site plan review, but I may have missed...
No, it is.
Okay, then that would need to be pulled from this vote as well.
So that was A, E, and 3A?
D1D, E, and 3A.
Okay, D, okay, I'm sure.
Yes, D1D. Yes, Ms. Dean declared, she's been excused on D1D also. All right. Anything else anyone wants to pull? Seeing none, is there any objection to approving the rest of the items in D1, D1? That would be D1B and C. Okay, hearing none, that, those are approved. D1, D1A, Ms. Pease?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I did not pull that one.
You did, I thought.
Madam Chair, I meant to pull D1D, D1E, and 3A.
Okay, so you did not pull D1A, and...
Madam Chair, then I move for approval of D1A.
And Mr. Weddleton has seconded. Is there any objection to approving D1A? Hearing none, that is now approved. All right, D, let's take D1D. Yes.
This is the Kinnick Arm Resolution regarding the Kinnick Arm Crossing. We reviewed it without benefit, I believe, of the printed minutes for the meeting in which we discussed this, and several others made comments or edits based on, I believe, probably our notes. I know that Ms. Underwood, the staff person, listened to the tapes. I had a couple of minor changes to the draft, but then a bigger question as well, and that is, there were some points added, numbers 31 through 36, and findings added. These were definitely reflective of information that the commissioners had during the meeting and agreed with, but I'm not 100 percent certain from my notes that they were part of the And the motion was to add certain enumerated findings. So it's a technical matter, but given the litigious nature of this case, I have the question from Ms. Graves of whether these findings belonged in the warehouses or in the enumerated list of findings.
I did send an email back to you, but I don't know if you had a chance to see it. What I found was the items that you're discussing were discussed between the motion and the vote, which is generally where the findings are found, and there, although there is some also general discussion in that area, as you can tell from the draft minutes, they, some of those items could very possibly have been considered findings. It is not my decision to say, yes, they should be in the resolution as findings or not, but that is where they fell in the meeting minutes. And there were some additional findings by Commissioner Weddleton.
Yes.
And so, and that's why I brought the draft that I have, and I attached that to the email I sent to you. It is not, it is very, it's a rough draft. The section from the motion forward is pretty close to like a transcript of what went down.
Madam Chair, is it possible that commissioners would want to look at the, well, I guess, I'm pretty comfortable with the, that we covered the gist of it. I'm wondering if we should, if time is of the essence and we need to pass this, if we should have a chance to glance at the notes, perhaps during one of our breaks? I mean, have a chance to glance at the minutes before we vote on this?
Madam Chair, Ms. Underwood is here and could possibly speak to the timeframe that this needs to be acted on, and whether or not you can... Apparently, if you would like to act on it either later tonight or your meeting next week, that would be sufficient, as far as their timing, if you need more time to look at your notes and your minutes.
Madam Chair, I would propose that we could act on it toward the end of the meeting. I'm comfortable looking at the minutes during any break in our meeting.
Well, what is the, Mr. Weddleton?
I believe all those points that, or seconded out are actually points that I offered as findings in our discussion, and they refer back to a document that was included in our packet.
Oh, okay.
And I had a number of emails with Ms. Graves and Underwood, and verified in the draft minutes that they were presented that way. But I don't mind waiting to, if you want to review the minutes, that's fine.
Okay. Well, if we want to move this item to the end of the agenda, a motion to do so would be in order so we can keep moving.
So moved.
And Mr. Ischam has seconded it?
Madam Chair, we, maybe we should try to dispose of it now, because Ms. Yoshimura would be held to act on this. I, Ms. Dean was...
Yeah, we may not have a quorum.
Yeah. I have just a small change, or a couple changes to one of the points, so if I could offer those and see if they're acceptable to Mr. Weddleton.
We have a motion on the floor we need to dispose of first.
Well, I would draw it. First, the button for it, did it work? By loud?
I'm not seeing any motions on my board.
With my computer system the way it is, a lot of times I'll run the motion and the first and the second, but I won't hit record, because usually I can hit record and then it's miss vote, and it does everything all at one time. But this was a different issue, and so if I hit record and then you hit withdraw, it should be, should be okay.
Well, I saw a red button that said withdraw, so I tapped it.
Ah, let's, I'll make sure it notes that it was withdrawn.
Okay, and I accept the withdrawal as the secondor.
Okay, Ms. Pease.
And I must apologize to Mr. Weddleton. I may have overlooked the minutes if they were in our packet, because I didn't believe...
They were on the table.
Okay, all right. I didn't see them before tonight, then. On item 33, I agree with the, with the, I believe that the text in our draft captures the point, but it's not quite clear, and I would propose to refine it as follows. Replacing the "we" in that first sentence with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I would have it read, during the public hearing, there was discussion regarding whether the Planning and Zoning Commission is obligated to consider the regional impacts.
Was it the P&amp;T?
Yeah.
We're sitting as the advisory, Citizens Advisory Council. I think that maybe is what we ought to use rather than the P&amp;T.
Right. Citizens Advisory Committee.
Okay. That makes even more sense, just so we know who the "we" is. Okay, so then that would be the Citizens Advisory Committee, not should, but is obligated to consider. And then continue with that sentence as written, so that it continues the regional impacts or just the Anchorage impacts of the bridge. And then farther down, it says, however, the Planning and Zoning Commission...
And again, that...
And that should say then, the Citizens Advisory Committee, or Commission?
Committee.
Okay. Citizens Advisory Committee. And here I would like to insert the words, finds that its obligation is to recommend land use and transportation policies that serve the best interests of the Anchorage And then the Citizens Advisory Committee understands, and continue with that paragraph. And then last, in that paragraph, the Citizens Advisory Committee has already found that there is no regional growth benefit from the KAC, only a redistribution of growth and revenues away from Anchorage.
That would be added to the end of 33?
Yes.
And there probably needs to be a global search and replace every time it says Planning and Zoning Commission to change it to Citizens Advisory, the AMAT Citizen Advisory Committee, Citizens Advisory Committee, because that's the correct name of what we were sitting as.
Yeah, I accept those changes, and I think they make the point more clear without changing the intent. I think that last sentence, it might be redundant with a finding elsewhere in the document.
Yeah, it is. So it added sort of covation to this paragraph, but in the interest of brevity, if you want to leave that off?
Hi, it's fine. It's in there.
Okay.
Thanks for the suggestions.
Okay. Any other proposed changes? Okay, now I do see Ms. Pease, it has a motion, and Mr. Weddleton is the secondor. Okay.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of the final reading of this resolution number 2009-053 with the changes we just discussed to point 33, and the changing, as I understand it, of our title in this resolution to Citizens Advisory Committee to AMAT.
Is there any objection to the motion? Hearing none, that motion is approved, and I'm noting Ms. Dean's abstention. Can you change her vote to, okay. All right, Ms. Pease, item D1E. All right, Ms. Pease, item D1E.
Yes, Madam Chair, this is the resolution rezoning the lands, Adler Christian Center Track A3. There were two changes to this on funding A2. It currently reads, the proposed rezoning to R3 is congruent with the PLI, and I remember that term from geometry, but I think what we mean is consistent or compatible. And again, it didn't have benefited the draft minutes, but I believe we had a finding, and maybe it wasn't at the proper time in the discussion, that the land proposed for rezoning is privately owned and highly unlikely to be used for parks or similar public purposes, and that was part of the reason that rezoning to residential use is appropriate.
Okay. What paragraph was that in again, Ms. Pease?
The first change I made was to item A2.
Okay.
The word congruent should be consistent or compatible.
Okay.
I think it's probably compatible. And the second point is not currently enumerated as a finding. It was part of our discussion. I don't know if, it was studied after the motion was made, and I don't know therefore if it can be added, but it was a point that came up and was important, I think, to note when we rezoned PLI land, that it's in private ownership and not likely to be a publicly developed parcel.
So do you want to make a motion?
Madam Chair, in the case of resolution 2009-058, I move for approval with the two changes just discussed.
Thank you for seconding, Mr. Weddleton. Do you wish to discuss the proposed changes?
No, I think they're fairly simple. One is a word, single word change. The other is just attempting to capture one of the overarching reasons the residential zoning makes sense.
Okay. Mr. Weddleton, I see you in the queue. Did you wish to speak to the motion?
I did. I think I support the sentiment, but I would want to verify that it was in the minutes properly. Do we count as a finding? Can we perhaps postpone this or vote it approval, adding that if it can be shown in the minutes that it was a finding?
I remember the discussion.
And you believe it wasn't?
You know, it was kind of strange having PLI privately owned, and it struck me as kind of strange, but that came across loud and clear.
Okay, we'll accept that then.
That would follow discussion as well.
So I'll vote in support.
Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, that is approved. So that concludes our consent agenda with the exception of 3A, which we're moving on and will take action in connection with case G1, which we will now move into the public hearing phase of our meeting. And before we move on to our public hearings, there are a few ground rules. Petitioners are allowed 10 minutes for their presentations on cases, and they're allowed to reserve time for rebuttal. If you're representing a group or an organization, you are allowed five minutes. If you're speaking as an individual, you will be allowed three minutes for your presentation. When we hear cases three and four that are combined together, I will announce special time limits for those two that are combined. But this first case, G1, will be the former time limits that I announced, which would be 10 minutes for the petitioner and five minutes for representatives of groups and three minutes for individuals, as there is no time allocated for case S11780, as that is not a public hearing item. And that would be 3A that was on the consent agenda. So having made those announcements, I will invite staff to give their presentation on case G1.
Madam Chairman, there were 77 public hearing notices mailed out. The property was legally posted and advertised. There were two return public comments. One is in your packet. It is a comment having to do with the height of the buildings as it relates to the roads and about a signal at the intersection of West CLAT and C Street. The second email should have been laid on the table for you. It is an email that is addressing, it doesn't really speak to this proposal as much as it speaks to the idea that their understanding was that this property was intended for greenbelt and/or parkland and not for commercial development. And so I don't know if that was intended to speak to a rezoning, which is not the case before us this evening. We're here to discuss a public hearing site plan review to address a limited site plan review of site design for access landscaping and screening. This is in accordance with AO 97150 as amended. That was approved in 1998, at which time the Assembly rezoned the property from transition to B3 with special limitations. We are looking tonight at a site containing 22.39 acres. It is also looking at a proposed, for sake of, I'll just put this on the record one time, the underlying property is also being a track plat, S11779, that would divide the parcel into two different tracts of land for baseball subdivision, tracks A2 and A3, and it would create, as I mentioned, the two underlying tracts. We're here tonight to talk about track A2, which has, is intended to provide access across the property and for the development on proposed track A3A, which is the six fragment lot, commercial fragment subdivision lot. So, and I'm going to be referring essentially to track A3B for the majority of my comments this evening. They are proposing to, as I mentioned, to subdivide the larger southern tract into six fragment lots. And we are looking tonight at the proposed development for that property that will be done in two phases, and it includes three office buildings, a restaurant, and a specialty retail structure, and it also includes a detention pond. The site has a north-south spine road that will have its primary access at the corner of C and West CLAT. The commission did look at a previous site plan review of a public roadway that, you looked at that on December the 7th, and that is for the roundabout at that intersection that I just referenced. You did approve it, and there were some, one of the things that was required, that we required, is that that underlying design had to be reflected on the fragment lot, commercial frag lot plat. So it did get delayed in order to make that accommodation. That is reflected on plans before you this evening. Phase one development is expected to be completed by 2011 and the phase two development by Initially, as it was submitted, there were three office buildings, two of which were two-story and containing 40,000 square feet, and one building containing three stories and 60,000 square feet. This led to issues arising from required parking and the landscaping and the aisleways and so forth. We had three sets of plans that were reflected. They were from October 15th, December the 10th, and December the 15th. The first two plans reflected incorrect parking legends utilizing proposed parking revision ratios that are not yet into effect. Those would be as proposed with revisions to Title 21 that are not yet in effect. We made them correct that in order to reflect the current Title 21, which had a lower parking ratio, and that increased the number of parking spaces. And there was this discrepancy back and forth, which we ultimately resolved. Also, with the last iteration of plans, the client decided to drop one of the stories from the third building, so they are all now two-story buildings, each of which contains So as we looked, there were a series of meetings that involved the underlying commercial plat and then the site plan, and we resolved a number of those issues, including the fact that with the, we're also looking at proposed track A2B, which is going to be providing secondary access ultimately from C Street and Peninsula intersection. That approach provides a private driveway access to the CLAT residence, which is on the north end of the larger tract, tract A1. And it will provide the easement, a PUE, across the east side, is that correct? Yeah, the east side of the tract, and then access just above track A2C. Among the issues that we also resolved was that, and that is reflected more in the plat than with this, but I'll just mention it, is that there was agreement between Parks and Rec, PM and E, Planning and Traffic, that there needed to be an east-west connecting roadway with the South Anchorage Sports Park access road, which is on the west side of this parcel, to the two-lane access road starting at C Street and Peninsula Street intersection. We don't know the timing of that development, but it will occur with, when track A2B is brought in for site plan review and further plating development, if that's the case. This was addressed in the TIA, and it was a recommendation of the traffic engineer, and is addressed, as I mentioned, with the plat 11780. That is the case adjoining this one this evening. There were also external pedestrian connections that were required as part of your review with the turn, the roundabout. Those have been resolved. There is going, Timberline and CLAT is going to remain signalized. There is pedestrian access both from that intersection as well as from a bike path tunnel north of the future C Street-West CLAT Road connection. We've looked at landscaping and both arterially along the roads, visual enhancement within the perimeter of the parking lots, parking lot landscaping, the 5% interior parking lot landscaping, and we also looked at the parking lot landscape islands. The parking lot, 5% minimum interior parking lot landscaping is exceeded, as shown in the table found on page 10 of your staff packet. They are, with regard to the parking, as I mentioned, once we resolve that they have to use the current Title 21 parking requirement ratios, the table as shown on page 12 and 13 reflects what the required parking is and what they have provided. And I would make one, actually, I'd make a couple little corrections with fragment lot number six, which is the retail specialty store with the restaurant. There is a total of 87, not 85, parking spaces provided, which would give a grand total for the entire site of 578 as opposed to 576 spaces, and it would create an additional, a surplus of five parking spaces on that fragment lot for a total of 44 surplus parking spaces overall. It is a requirement that each of the fragment lots provide their own required parking and their landscaping. And essentially, because there is, there are two lots, for example, that have, are deficient. deficient, lots three and five. Lot four has a surplus. In order to proceed with their phasing construction development for phase one, for example, they could enter into a joint parking agreement between those three lots because there is the flexibility between the three. However, as you will see in the discussion at the end of the analysis on page 16, it's the consensus of the traffic department and the non-motorized transportation coordinator and the planning department that there are a number of issues that we would like to see them come down to having only what is the required parking and not have surplus parking. But we also want them to include, for example, in fragment lot, what would that be? I think it's, well, just a moment, I have to find that. The fragment lot four is the largest of the proposed lots. Initially, they had provided sidewalk connections within the parking lot itself. With the last iteration, they removed it. We would like to be able to work with them in order to have them redesign the lot in order to accommodate the parking, the required parking, the correct width on the aisle ways, and to include parking, sidewalk connections where possible, as well as within, I believe it would be between lots five and six as well. We want, there seems to have been differences between the actual measured dimensions and the dimensions that were printed on the plan. And we think that between having them rework those items that we can resolve to reduce the surplus parking, to accommodate the parking lot pedestrian walkways and the landscape parking islands, that is also reflected as one of the conditions of approval. Those are found on pages 17 through 20. So what we're asking, they are asking for tonight, is approval of tract A2B, which allows for the access road connection along the east side of the lot. And then for approval of the six lot configuration for the two phases. Construction, the discussion that I mentioned about having them redesign the layout somewhat is reflected in condition number 10. And to that, I would include, I did check with the traffic engineer, and there was a traffic impact analysis, but it did not require them to address bicycle racks. But we will include that as something to resolve and to provide with each of the buildings under condition number 10. It's also discussed in condition number 13. And I would insert on the second line, where the line begins, lot pedestrian walkways, surplus parking, I would insert bicycle racks. And then it goes on to read, and adjust the parking lot landscaping. Under condition number 14, I would like to correct the reference for the performance bond. It should read on the second line, AMC 2108060. And I will, that concludes my presentation.
Hey, Mr. Weddleton, you've been in the queue a long time.
Well, actually, I forgot about that, so I clicked myself back in. Just a couple of follow-up questions. On that 14, was that 21.08.060, was that to replace the 21.87030?
Yes.
To replace?
Yes.
On the walkways on, I think you're saying tract four, that's with building two?
That's correct.
So you're looking for additional pathways in that area beyond that five-foot one shown?
Yes, Mr. Weddleton. If you look at that, the way the lot design is laid out, the aisles run in an east-west direction. And we're looking for a sidewalk connection between that first, between the first and the second double-loaded parking, where it shows a parking strip or a landscape strip.
And then from building two to building three, did you, was that one of your?
Well, that would provide the, that does address building two. Building two is on fragment lot four.
Right, I thought you'd said something between lot, and different between?
I was referring mostly to the landscaping between building three and building five.
Okay. Did, so you, did the petitioner agree to add those in at this point? Did the petitioner accepted those new walkways as okay?
He has agreed to work with us in resolving those issues. But primarily, what we're after is to bring down the parking to only what is required. But on the other hand, to allow them to do the joint parking agreement in order to meet the overall requirement of the parking.
Okay, now, we had a brief discussion earlier today and on email, and one of the issues that came up here is that the Title 21 rewrite would require less parking, as they showed in their earlier plan.
That's correct.
And it's likely that that rewrite would be approved probably prior to them building or developing this project. So is there some way that we could tonight allow that lower parking requirement to take effect, since it'll be the reality about the time they start building this thing?
Well, I don't know if that's going to be the reality or not. They're going to need to get, pull some permits here shortly. And they can always resolve it once the permits have been pulled. But they are wanting to proceed with building one and two early this spring in order to get it completed by, I believe, May or June of next year. The other fragment lots then would have to comply with whatever the parking requirement is under whatever's in effect at that time.
So should we add wording to that effect? Because otherwise, we're saying, this is the plan we want to see. Or should we, in the conditions, accept that projects that are developed after the rewrite's done can be reworked to conform with the new parking requirements?
I believe that it can be, I had a discussion with the traffic engineer late this afternoon. And he indicated to me that they could modify that parking agreement at that time. In other words, if it's not required, it's not required. But at the very least, it would have to affect fragment lots three, four, and five for them to pull the permits for building one and building two.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Isham.
Mr. Teague, can you go over again where you want that bicycle rack stuff put in? I wasn't paying attention there.
Yes, I inserted that in condition 10, it would be added to the fourth line. So the line begins, provides parking lot pedestrian connection slash walkways, comma, bicycle racks, comma, and landscaping to the extent possible.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Phelps.
So what I have is our questions, our questions on the wording of some of the conditions. And the first one begins on condition number seven on page 15. I think what is being required here is that the secondary access, the interior north-south spine road and the short spur road shall be designed, constructed to municipal standards and carry out the subdivision agreement as was fragged in AMC. Is that's what happening here?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Number eight, it says, a revised arterial landscape plan and so forth. What is that intended to do? What's the purpose of a revised landscape plan?
The intent there is, if you look on page, if you look on page 72, you'll find a site access plan that accompanied the memorandum of license agreement that the petitioner and the CLATs entered into in order to allow access between the three tracks. The CLATs are retaining A1 to the north, which is where the secondary access will have to come in from Peninsula and C Street. That access goes along a portion of their, the south portion of their tract, and then it follows across tract A2B, and then goes up the south boundary of A2B, and then does a 90-degree turn to provide the spine road into tract A through B. C, I guess, C. B, sorry, I'm getting confused. So that access agreement, somehow we have to resolve, that is not before us tonight. What we're looking at is A2B and A3C.
I guess I'm still not clear as to why we're requiring a revised arterial landscape plan for A1 and A2B.
We don't have one at this point.
Oh. Okay, so?
It's required for along C Street, arterial landscaping.
So this is required for this action this evening, then? But it's not available this evening? So you're wanting for it to be required as a condition of approval?
That's correct.
Okay. On number nine, then, it seems like the second sentence in that paragraph, and it begins, because this development is being done, da-da-da-da, that sounds like a commentary description to me as opposed to a stipulation. I understand the first sentence, which basically says, each fragment lot is required to meet the current Title 21 required parking and parking lot landscaping requirements. That I understand. But why the second sentence in there?
To allow them to do the joint parking agreement for, between the deficient and the surplus lots.
So what the second sentence is actually doing is giving an option to the developer to submit a joint parking plan in fulfillment of these conditions. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And then number 10, then, the concern that I have is that the information that's being required in terms of revised landscape parking site plan, that resolves the parking and pedestrian connections and walkways and landscaping, how extensive do you anticipate that revision to be? Let me tell you where I'm going with this, okay? I'm trying to find out if this is a minor change to the site plan drawing we have this evening, or if, in your opinion, it's going to be a major change. And what I'm getting to is, do we need to have it come back again? Or in your opinion, is it sufficiently minimal, so we don't have to worry about it?
Through the chair, Commissioner Phelps, that really is the decision of the board on how comfortable you are with us as the administration to address these issues, or whether you wish to see them a second time. We have had many conversations between Laurie Skanki, who is the non-motorized transportation coordinator on trails and walkways and landscaping, as well as with the traffic engineer. And it seemed that it was a logical thing for us to review revisions until they satisfied the Title 21 requirements for each of the lots. And as you can see, we had, there were three different plans that we brought to you tonight to show you the progression of the site design. And the overall design, we think, is workable. We think it does what is required. But it does require some shifting and some, frankly, a little bit of redesign within each of the fragment lots. And we're prepared to do that if you choose to accept this that comes before you tonight. We think that the landscaping can be tweaked a little in terms of the types of plantings and the selection that they have to make an improvement. We think overall, the pedestrian access is there. It's there, but it's not totally finished to their satisfaction. And we want to make sure that we don't have any conflicts between, for example, the width of the fire lanes and the width of the aisles. We think that there's a lot of excess in some of the parking aisles. Some of them are 26 feet, some of them are 24. We think it can be tightened up. And it would be our intent that And it would be our intent that we would provide the basic connections and the basic parking, and then to have as much landscaping as we can fit in in other places.
So would it be correct to say that we're not in this process really trying to meet rigorous Title 21 requirements, since it seems like they already met? The issue here is more of, since we have, it would seem, surplus parking relative to the code requirements, what is possible in terms of reducing those spaces, and by virtue of that, increasing pedestrian connections and increasing the amount of landscaping? Is that kind of what you're on?
That is exactly correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Isham.
You're done? Okay. Any further questions, staff?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I have questions, but I didn't know whether you might want to do the public hearing. First, whether you want us to get all our questions out first?
I would prefer we wait.
I'll wait.
Okay. So I will go ahead and open up the public hearing at this time and invite the petitioner or its representative to come forward. And I'm sorry, if you're planning to use Elmo tonight, our Elmo isn't working.
No Elmo.
Okay.
I'm Dale Smith, an architect with USKH. Just wanted to bring up a few points on the building development, the actual construction related to the buildings themselves. This South Anchorage development is meant to better that along the town. We've got, as was mentioned earlier, original plans for three-story and two-story office along with the inline and standalone restaurant. That's been changed with input from the community and SOELS reports to now be strictly two-story buildings. We want to enforce that, really, relate that all the development that we have related to the buildings are within code. We're not asking for any special revisions there and within the special limitations that were set on this lot also. The architecture is supposed to represent some refined simplicity. We're trying to gain interest in the buildings with color and texture and not firm. We're keeping them relatively simple. We want to coordinate the design within the buildings to not mimic each other exactly, but to represent a campus feel for the entire development. We think that's important with this, with what they're trying to do. The things, the other things are important. Series elected to design these buildings to lead silver is what we're attempting at this point. As we further design, we're committing to a certified level at a minimum, or a goal is a silver. Things related to the bike racks, as mentioned earlier. That's really the overall architectural end of it. I'll let Jacques talk to the site design, continue on this.
And did you wish to reserve any of your time for rebuttal?
You bet.
Like, would you like to give me?
Couple of minutes.
Couple of minutes? Okay.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, Jacques Bouteille, also with the development team representing the developer tonight. I would be happy to spend a couple of minutes following Dale's discussion on the buildings and maybe clarify a few of the talking points that have come out and some of your questions for planning. Just walking through lots of them just in general, this development is consistent with the area. I think it reflects in many, many ways an effort to bring leadership in energy and environmental design into South Anchorage. It's intended to provide a mixed-use development that is accessible to the community and invites alternate transportation modes through the park, exiting into the site from the park, from the adjacent neighborhoods, and from some of the commercial areas to the east. There have been some changes, market-driven changes in our approach to this project. The one that planning reduced was the decision to reduce the three-story building to two floors. Again, the tenant for that building requested in that area. That part of the site we used for their purposes, and they don't have enough demand for three-stores, so we went ahead and modified that. We knew that was a permanent change. That would also be, this is down on the very, very south end of the site, this, again, the three-story building, that would be the first building that we break ground at, hopefully, next spring. And I'll comment a little bit more about the development schedule as we walk through some of the recommendations. But I'd say in general, we support planning's recommendations, but I'd like to offer a few clarifications and some modifications. Specifically, marching through the first eleven, twelve, we really have no comments. Those recommendations were developed in extensive dialogue with the development team. On item thirteen, the introduction of bike racks in the discussion here earlier, again, we support that. As part of our certification process for the project, we'd be offering up bike rack installations through the credits that the lead organization allows for that installation. Moving forward, through, actually, I apologize, I write the back up to recommendation four. Let's look past me. That is the development schedule. And I think we would ask, for purposes of moving forward, in a simplified fashion, that we just simply delete this recommendation. Two reasons. Number one is that it's, our schedule is market-driven, and so we are somewhat at the mercy, if you will, of how fast our tenants are willing to move. And there have been, again, modifications in the plan subsequent to our submitted here. And finally, I'd suggest that there are applicable codes to a two-year term unit on site approval and five years on the fragment subdivision that would impose, as well as slip requirements through leadership management, that would drive us towards many of the same results that we get out of a codified development schedule that we have to come back over and over again to modify. I'd also like to talk briefly about the landscaping for the tracks that are not part of the specific first two phases of site development, subbed up on tracks A1 and A2B. I would note that just because our focus is on the southern end of the site, the landscape plan reflects our intentions for phases one and two. Planning noted correctly that we did a very often discussion in our submittals on landscaping for the two parcels to the north. Track A1 is not owned by Grilling, owned by Coquelin, so we really have no control over that site. And I would note that it is heavily on our landscape to have the premium right now. It's about to be end of our piece of small residential development. Similarly with track A2B, there is existing landscaping there that we do not propose to disturb during any of our initial development activities. So again, our subsequent submittals of plan will reflect those existing conditions, but I think it does some mitigate the notion that we've kind of admitted landscaping on those two parcels. With that, I guess I'll finish my piece, and we will have a few questions.
Okay. So they've got, you've got an addition to that? All right. Oh, you didn't subtract that, too. Oh, okay. All right. Are there questions for the petitioner? Okay, I've got first, Mr. Weddleton, and then Mr. Phelps, Ms. Dean, and Mr. Isham. So if you want to get in, ladies want to get in the queue?
I pushed my button.
No, I can't see either one of you.
Okay, I'm on there.
Okay, Mr. Weddleton.
Thanks for your presentation. I just want to make clear now, the landscaping for track A1 and A2B, would you remove recommendations eight and eleven? Is that what you're recommending?
Well, again, we don't have any problem reflecting existing landscaping in subsequent submittals, which we do with the C2 requirement. And we don't plan to disturb any of that landscaping during our phase one and two development activities, so I think it would stand as it is today. And then as we move into our subsequent phases three and four, what we do, start to develop track A2B, we'll be back before the commission, the supplemental site plan, before we do an approval.
So you're giving us warning that your revised landscape plan for those tracks would basically be to show what's existing?
Precisely.
Okay.
Mr. Phelps.
Your recommendation concerning item number four begins on page seventeen. My understanding of the concern that you had here is that your project is market-driven, and because it's market-driven, it's not practicable to identify specific dates. I guess I understand that. That's correct, right?
Yes, sir.
Now, I'm proposing as well that you would take out the references to the type of buildings, like office building four, or a two-story structure, forty thousand square foot building under four B.
Through the chair, no objections to the present, to the descriptive part of it. It's not the schedule that we're concerned with.
Okay, so just to clarify then, that you're concerned in this particular recommendation is with the timing aspects, not with the description of what is to take place?
Through the chair, exactly.
Okay. Now, I want to go back to eight and eleven. I guess I am still confused on this. What I'm hearing you say is on item eight, what you're anticipating doing in terms of providing a landscape plan is providing a landscape plan that basically describes the existing configuration of existing landscaping. Is that right?
Through the chair, exactly.
What about eleven, then?
I'm sorry?
What about item number eleven, then? What is your intention on that?
Again, I think the same. The observation that planning has made, which is correct, is that during the last platting action, because it was ago prior to Grilling having a new shift, there was a plat note that sort of locked together tracks A1, two, and three into a, essentially, a single site approval process. And so if we look at one, we have to look at the now, planning found out that we did not precisely do that in our submittals. So now we're really proposing to do, and we're simply carry those forward as we continue to work with planning and illustrate our intentions.
So what I think I heard you say is that there's an existing plat note that requires that three aspects of this be essentially designed as, at the same time, or drawn at the same time, and that requires you to bring it forward in a particular way?
That's my understanding, yes. And again, our interpretation is that absent development plans, or certainly in this case, site controls, is the case for track A1, they simply reflect what we know at the time of our submitted. So at this time, the only aspect of this development that we really have any visibility on is track A3B, hence the supplement in front of us tonight. Track A2B, again, Grilling owns it, but has no development plans for it at this time. And track A1 is not under Grilling's site control, so we have no knowledge of what the future lies for that.
So what I'm getting is that really this needs to be recast in terms of A2, what's A2B?
This is part of our short plat, yes, just to adjust the lateline between A2 and A3. It's a minor modification, but we're also dedicated the necessary right away to support the proposed roundabout at the south end of A3.
Madam Chair, I think that, I'm not going to ask any more questions or clarification at this point, because I would probably want to ask staff, but I would like to go back to this gentleman at a subsequent time.
Okay. Mr., let's see, Mr. Isham.
Yes, Mr. Bouteille. Been a while since we were on the slope together, wasn't it?
Yes, sir. And I've headed south the last time, too.
In regards to your desire to delete section four of the recommendations, as far as the timing is concerned, it seems to me if we don't put some sort of dates in there, this thing almost becomes speculative. I don't know, do you have any comment on that?
Through the chair, again, my understanding of code is if we've achieved site approval in a month, we have two years to fulfill our commitments, or we're essentially back to square one on that issue. Similarly with the fragment, I believe it's five years to prove that out, or again, we have to come back. With respect to the tension basin, that is a critical piece of infrastructure that will be required to be in place and functional before we're given any building certificate of occupancy. So I feel that it is speculative in the sense that we ultimately will have to do things in the right order, and again, according to guidelines that are already out there for us to follow. I just simply want to, I guess it's more of technical clarification, but one that perhaps saves us a lot of back and forth, which is just eliminating those delivery dates, if you will, when they're spreading.
Thank you.
Ms. Dean, you disappeared out of the queue.
Madam Chair, I got answers to my questions as we follow.
Okay, Ms. Pease.
Yes, Madam Chair, I have several questions, some of which maybe staff will want to respond to. Mr. Bouteille, in meeting the LEED standards for a sustainable site, as well as looking at the, I mean, the comp plans, northern design guidelines, was any consideration of landscaping next to any sides of the building? Because it strikes me that of all the sides of all the buildings, there's only one that has landscaping adjoining it, and the rest are surrounded by pavement. And it would seem that there could be some LEED benefits, as well as aesthetic and work environment benefits from having the landscaping, some landscaping adjacent to the buildings.
Through the chair, Commissioner Pease, I think that might be best answered by the architect. Speaking as someone that is involved in LEED issues, I do know that having the right penetration in the building is considered actually fairly more important than having anything next to the building. But I'd like my Dale to speak to the philosophy on locating some of those features.
Through the chair, the intent is to limit the amount of maintenance required and effects that that can have on the building envelope. So with that, we're actually putting in a drip edge, you'd say, of gravel between the building and the sidewalk, then the sidewalk, and then actually limiting landscaping close to being. The benefits are there. For us, it was a decision made for peeling maintenance. We've moved over from the envelope itself, we're receiving many of the benefits that you also could gain through landscaping and meeting full LEED requirements in other areas.
What about with regards to the backsides of some of these buildings? I know it's late in the game for aesthetics, but given all of the effort we've put into our Title 21 code to make, to increase the attractiveness, you know, looking at, for example, on page seventy-eight, building five, which fronts the street, fronts the neighborhood, and it's a blank wall. It's a long blank wall with five, probably, service doors. Is there, you know, anything that can make that more of a front? No, we're trying to have backsides where in the back, but this is kind of a front.
Through the chair, taken very well, I understand exactly what you're saying. The intent, what we try to do is continue the facade that we have at the front, minus the emphasis that you obviously have at the main entry, but to not forget the back with material and color, so we're still using all the same concepts around the building so that, in essence, from a material standpoint, the back is no different than the front. The obvious emphasis is on that main entry, and decisions needed to be made on where that entry was in relationship to the site development. So it is a compromise, and we've made choices to have that main entry along the front. If that answers your question. we've made choices to have that main entry along the front, uh, if that answers your question.
Um, I guess I would say that it's a, well, anyhow, um, that's your answer. Um, what about some of the remnant odd-shaped paving areas? And I'm thinking particularly of the area, if I look at the map here. West of building one, it looks as if, you know, that's a twenty or more foot wide area, it's not a drive aisle. Is there any reason areas like that couldn't be incorporated into previous surface landscaping, that sort of thing?
Uh, through the chair, again, um, as I think has been talked about extensively already, um, we are sort of straddling the cusp of the old Title Twenty-One, the new Title Twenty-One, um, and the driver for lotteries is parking. Um, we had initially proposed to move forward under the new Title Twenty-One, uh, calculations for parking, and our first plan is pointing at it, had a substantial less, uh, spaces. Subsequently, the planning interpreted code as saying that for purposes of moving forward at this time, absent the copy amendment or, uh, natural qualification in Title Twenty-One, that we would be forced to comply with, uh, new parking standards, old parking standards, current parking standards. But there is an option, um, should things move forward at, at some level, to give us a way to reduce parking, which is, from my view perspective, very desirable. And that allows us to revisit a lot of those questions, uh, related to substituting, uh, rapways and other previous surfaces, um, for parking, uh, drive aisles. So again, I think where we stand, you know, discussions with planning is that we're prepared to move forward and good forward, and as time goes on, see if we can negotiate this all out and come back, uh, move forward, I should say, um, with a tighter, uh, parking supply, no rapways, and hopefully no landscaping.
Through the chair, but all that pointed to actually is not parking, it's not, a drive aisle is not parking, so could I assume that your answer means that you'd be flexible if there are these remnant spaces that are currently shown as paved to having them other than pavement?
Through the chair, exactly, yes.
Thank you. I have a few more. You want to go ahead with me? Okay. Um, uh, the detention basin, um, there doesn't appear to be any access to it, I don't know if it's in any way an outdoor space that could be enjoyed, has that been considered? I don't know whether it will have water or rain garden type of plants, but right now it's, uh, it doesn't look as if any access is provided to it.
Um, through the chair, precisely, at this point, of course, that'll be at the very northwest corner of our development, and immediately north is, you know, at this point, we have no knowledge of how that's going to ultimately be developed. Um, there is, uh, a fair amount of subsurface rattle in the site, um, we're speculating now amongst ourselves, having looked at drilled many, many holes out there, as to where our site is somewhat stranded, and it doesn't have a natural, uh, food, if you will, like groundwater, it retains so much water. Um, so to answer your question about what we can do with the basin, we expect to have rattle in there, um, most of the time, at some level. Um, we now, as we look through our, uh, hydrology, hydraulic reports, and look at opportunities to, uh, uh, to connect to the barb that's immediately to the west, you know, we haven't come up with a complete stormwater management plan yet, but, um, we'll certainly have to have access to, uh, the plan, just simply for maintenance purposes, so, uh, there will be some form of access, uh, particularly as we build out tract A two B, it'll be, it'll be minimalized.
Okay. Um, through the chair, rooftops, this is a below, below the road grade site, we have before us on the presentation though, which the audience can't see, it just shows a blank, but we know there probably will be mechanical equipment and that sort of thing. Um, is there any screening or attempt to make the roof, which is going to be the main view from the road, attractive?
I'll let our architect address that, but I think the answer is yes.
Through the chair, we've got some realities in construction, we're attempting, or not attempting, committing to a white membrane to meet LEED standards for the roof construction. I don't know how attractive the white would be versus the black of regular EPM roofs. We do have, uh, rooftop units, one in the slightly off-center of each of the buildings. The intent now in design is to screen those similar to the dumpster screening, and then also to what we have in the facade, which is next year, metal cladding, I'm sorry, wood cladding, and try and match that similar feel, mimic it throughout the development.
I think our new code allows something like one-third to one, to, one-third to one-half of the rooftop to be mechanical units in a pertance, but it sounds as if you won't be approaching that.
No. No, through the chair, all of our, um, all of the design right now meets our current code.
Okay. Um, also, the trail that's proposed, at least on some of our parking plan, for example, um, along the north side of the property, um, appears not to connect up to the bike path, and I wonder whether you'd had any discussions with the city about that? No, I correct myself, it appears to go down that secondary access road to peninsula intersection, future intersection. Um, we know that the best routes for pedestrians and bikers are the short routes. Is there any ability or discussion about bringing that up the easement, slope easement, um, so that people can go right through the tunnel under C Street and not have to go up to the intersection? Because that's probably what they'll try to do anyway.
Um, through the chair, uh, I'm not sure, you know, given that this is a commercial business center, that we necessarily want to be encouraging too much kind of cut-through traffic. Um, what we committed to do as part of our future, uh, site planning process, when we do begin our work on tract A two B, is again, revisit the connection, um, if you will, between C Street and the Southank or Sports Park, um, somewhere, um, anywhere within lap A two B. Um, certainly if that, if we're in that connection is developed, and again, I mean, I think Commissioner Pease is right, it's likely to have its eastern terminus at the peninsula intersection, but, um, there certainly would be a trail, um, in sidewalk attached to that. Uh, the challenge we have is, of course, typographic is substantial, the country lines between the south is, you know, twenty feet from C Street to our site, and then another twenty feet between our site and the park, so anything we do ends up being, um, something of a traverse, a sidewalk traverse, and then that's certainly not a desirable situation for a trail. But nonetheless, we do want to make at least one hard connection at the north end of our site down into the, the sports park, um, to allow, nonetheless, vehicles to get down there. As far as, again, trying to build better connectivity between the public road system and the park through our site, um, I'm hesitant to, again, create, you know, a cut-through situation where you've got people that really don't belong, if you will, in a, in a private business, uh, park, cutting through, if you will, with, with really no interest in being on the site. Um, that said, we certainly want to use economy as we can in terms of having attached sidewalks and trails to our internal ways, including circulation patterns within the parking lots, but from my perspective, as someone that does practice traffic engineering, I'd like to keep traffic, parklighting to traffic on the public facilities, um, moving along C Street or clap, or in the case of the future, allowing a connection, if you will, at the north end of, or smother, if you will, of tract A three.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Pease, I'm going to have to interrupt you, we've got other people in the queue, we have the public that we need to hear from, and so maybe after that, we can continue, if you have, continue to have any here, uh, questions. Uh, Monsieur Shimura, you've been patient for a long time.
Um, thank you for your presentation so far, Mr. Butte. I have a couple of questions as it relates to your site plan. So, um, it's my understanding that your, uh, proposal to build the first two buildings on lot four and lot three, is, is that correct?
At this point, uh, through the chair, um, at this point, the only committed plan we have is for building two, which would be on lot four.
Could you point that out to?
Yes, it's at the very south end.
Be that building? That's now a two-story, that's forty thousand square feet, and what would be the maximum, maximum occupancy for that building?
The two hundred.
Two hundred, okay. And, um, I am assuming that you're building all of the roads up to the north end of the last flag lot, is that correct? You're building all of that? Um, or?
Through the chair, you've been in our two thousand and ten construction program?
Yes. What, what roads are you building?
Okay.
If you could point them out on.
Well, let me grab, I'm going to grab and come back to the mic, so you don't.
Okay. Great.
So again, um, there's been, you know, a change in our development strategy over the last few months, just, just again, based on commitments of lack thereof from tenants on the site. So as it stands today, we have a committed tenant for this building, we're moving forward full speed with design and preparation for, uh, submittal submitting safety. So as such, uh, we've conferred with, with public safety, secondary access is not required for this building, so, you know, we essentially are focusing our access on, and cooperatively with the municipality, propose to develop, move the roundabout into construction next summer. If things go well, the roundabout will be opening a little bit in advance of our building in two thousand and eleven. So with respect to our requirements, um, we will need access up to here, and then across into here. Beyond that, um, we're also going to be doing landscaping, fulfilling our primary landscaping requirements of our interior. We need to build out a detention basin and establish necessary, uh, stormwater flows to have all of the site drain into that detention basin, and then there are the other.
So your subdivision basin will be for, show us, uh, for the road improvement?
The initial, the initial construction as envisioned by the owner right now takes us to about here.
And is that at the end of a lot, or is that in the middle of the lot?
It's, uh, it's moving into the, the two frag lots to the immediate north of our, of our.
To the end of those two frag lots?
No, it'll be up into here.
Or at the?
At this point, into here, yeah.
South end of those two frag lots.
And then as, as we hopefully secure commitments for tenancy to the north, then we move forward with our road.
And at what point in time is the secondary egress going to be required? Have those discussions with traffic and, you know?
Yes, we have. Essentially, um, the TRO was, was written, this was anticipated to be a three-story building, which would have had an immediate requirement for secondary access. Once we eliminated that third floor and reduced everything down to a one or two-story structure, secondary access then became, uh, a non-issue with respect to public safety because of our connectivity to the proposed roundabout. So then we start looking at traffic impacts and the timing of development on the site as to when that secondary access becomes necessary to address levels of capacity, um, um, congestion at our, at our access point here at the roundabout. So essentially, the TRO concluded that we can, as we get to this point, and maybe even a bit beyond, we're going to be okay. Um, but what happens is, of course, is that in the TRO, it's a very forward-looking analysis, we're looking ahead ten years past our, our opening year, so I'm looking at a base traffic load at, at twenty twenty-two, and then adding in, so that surely the, the area's trip generation, uh, numbers for each of the buildings. So to answer your question, basically, simply, we get on this island here before we start to see a traffic, uh, capacity we have a need for secondary access.
And what is the occupancy, maximum occupancy for the other four proposed buildings?
Well, again, I, and I dare as a fair to say that, that the office buildings would probably be around two hundred, so two hundred, two hundred, so it'd be, uh, six hundred here, and then, and then moving into a retail, and I could pull out the, uh.
Would be the maximum occupancy for the retail?
I don't, that number's not where it is, Commissioner.
And the other, and the other, uh, smaller building?
The restaurant.
Maximum.
My, uh, my analysis, my traffic analysis looked at square footage as the metric for driving traffic volumes.
So would it be safe to say, under these circumstances, at least, that, um, you are not going to have a secondary egress for up to eight hundred people? If I'm calculating correctly, two, four, six, and then giving you quite a bit of leeway on the retail and, and the restaurant?
Again, I, the numbers, I arrive at the same numbers you do with the same assumptions.
I just find that difficult, to think that there's not going to be a need for a secondary egress. Um, can you demonstrate to me, uh, maybe give me examples of other, um, uh, commercial developments in Anchorage that don't have a secondary egress with this sort of load, occupancy load?
Um, not off the top of my head, Commissioner, but, uh, again, if I may step back a little bit, again, when we prepare the traffic impact analysis, um, you know, we were required to do two things, uh, I'm sure it's, you already know, we look at those traffic loads out ten years past our opening date, which in this case was, um, assumed to be two thousand twelve, which we've just moved to two thousand twenty-two, so we took current, you know, we looked at both, the transcan matter, the municipality maintains, and we also applied growth rates that were, uh, developed in concert with the traffic engineering department, uh, traffic department, excuse me. So we came up with base loads that are substantially higher than what we're seeing today, um, on C and clap. In addition, then, we used nationally accepted trip generation rates for each of the buildings based on their expected use, and in a case here, in my case, I chose, um, the size of the building, the square footage of the building, as the determinant, if you will, of the trip generation rate. Again, those numbers were reviewed by the traffic department and accepted. So, um, we can certainly pull those numbers out and start to combine together, but let's just say that the injection of the roundabout here versus, say, a, a traffic, uh, channelized and signalized intersection, um, substantially increases the capacity of this approach, uh, of our approach in and out of the, uh, of the building. In addition, just again, from a traffic perspective, we also benefit from having, if you will, cross currents, in other words, the, uh, there's an offset with the direction and the nature of the pit flows in and out of the site versus the, the movement of traffic around.
Can I ask you to sum up? We've, we've got a lot of cases left to handle.
I understand.
Um, Ms. Dean, um, I'm going to recognize you, you haven't had a turn yet.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, my concern is for the neighbors, uh, there's a lot of light. My concern is for the neighbors, the residential neighbors, they're going to be dealing with light, they're going to be dealing with sound. One of the things that Commissioner Pease brought up was the roof issue. I do see that there are other options than just white or black. If you are up above and looking down on this development, you're going to see a lot of white, or you're going to see a lot of black. There are, there's a third option for roof material, you can get a rock print, or some type of a vegetative print, so that you don't have to look at white or black, and that might be a lot more appealing. We might want to add a recommendation number twenty-one stating that white and black roofing materials are not acceptable, that we need to use a vegetative or, uh, you know, rock type print in order to keep people from having glare from up above, and to have a more pleasant product to look at. The cost difference is very, very slight, it's not something that is going to cost you millions of dollars, it's just a very small difference between the different products. I think it's a fair request.
Um, through the chair, uh, so, you know, we're not interested in black roofs, it's, uh, you know, from the perspective of energy conservation, it's a very inappropriate choice. Um, I believe we're going with green roofs, or white? Okay, we're going with white, yes, I think the, the. Okay, we're going with white, as I can be restated. So as we move away from white, from the perspective again of our lead certification process, which we feel is a good community objective, and we start to lose points in there.
But I understand that, but you are a neighbor looking down on white glare. There have been lawsuits actually related to that with roofs. When a taller building is looking down on a lower building in commercial structures, the lower building having a white roof can offer a lot of glare for the taller building above. And I know this from personal experience.
Through the chair, we can consider that. It's obviously an economic decision, and that is a material that, if not required by any code currently, we would be throwing out of our own cognizance, which we have taken those steps in many other portions of the building. I would accept the comment, and I agree with you.
I understand about lead points. I know that it does require quite a few special materials for the exterior in order to hold heat in as much as possible in the winter. But I'm also looking at the quality of life of the people around the area too. Thank you.
Mr. Weddleton, can you wait until after the public is?
Sure, that'd be fine.
Okay, Ms. O'Perry, you've been in the queue a very long time.
I just had a couple of comments that.
Are they brief? Pardon me, are they brief?
Well, I'd like to.
I can wait, I can wait. Thank you, I appreciate all you waiters. I think we don't have any more questions from the commission right now. They are maybe after the hearing, and you also do have your rebuttal time still left. Okay, I will open the hearing to the public at this time. Remember, if you're speaking on behalf of a group, you have five minutes, and if you're speaking as an individual, you have three minutes. And I welcome you to come forward and offer your comments at this time. Is there anyone here that would like to testify on this matter, anyone at all? If no one, I will close the public hearing if there's no one that's going to jump up and come forward, because we have a lot of business tonight. Could you state your name for the record, sir?
My name is Odine Gell. I own a property, residential property, right behind C Street and Clatt. The next thing, that there's a lot of kids in that area all the time on the intersection. Not just kids, we've got bears that comes through, we have notoriously a lot of moose that comes through, okay? Personally, the roundabouts I like to talk about, I think it's a bad idea. I think we should have a very strong signal light in that area, intersection wise, where there are also hand signals and so forth. We have a lot of kids that love to run across the streets, they sometimes are very the tunnels. And we have a lot of little kids on bicycles, we have little kids with dogs running across the street in that area. So roundabouts is not a good idea, new person, I don't think it is. And if you do put a roundabout in there, I would suggest no speed bumps, but dip bumps with sufficient drainage. People in these SUVs, they'd love to go over speed bumps like they're not there, but if they hit a dip bump, it forces them to slow down in the roundabouts. And we do not have one of those dip bumps in Anchorage anywhere. But my experience on A forty-eight, those dip bumps surely won't slow those drivers One other thing is the parking light in the parking area. We don't like, we like to look at stars at night. We're just wondering how bright this light's going to be when we can't even see the stars at night. It's in my backyard. And I've got a lot of trees in my backyard, but in the winter, you can see everything. And as the lady over here says something about the white roof reflecting, I doubt going with her, it's got to be shaded down somehow. Sometimes that sun cycle's there and hits that white roof, it definitely hits us in the eyes. And just one more thing, it's going to increase traffic there. I wonder if there's going to be a sign barrier on the residential side of the road, up and down the whole Via Appia area? It's just a concern. That's all I got.
Okay, let's see if there are any questions for you, sir?
Oh, sure.
Are there any questions? Apparently not. Thank you for coming out and coming forward. Is there anyone else that would like to testify? If so, jump up and come forward. Anyone else? There's nobody? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Well, I'll, actually, I'll invite Mr. Bouteau to come forward, he has three minutes of rebuttal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a brief comment on the site lighting. We are very cognizant of the potential impacts of those lights on, you know, view shed for the neighbors. And they will be designed again with lead standards in mind, with the necessary shielding to direct that light downward rather than upward. I think we'd be really happy with the low impact of this light. Thank you.
Okay, there may be some questions, so I wouldn't run off. Are there any questions of either the petitioner or staff? I see Ms. Pease in the queue, Mr. Weddleton, and Mr. Phelps. And I'm going to limit you each to a couple of rounds of questions here, so think of your questions carefully. We need to move forward. Yes, Ms. Pease?
Yes, Madam Chair, I think these are mostly for staff. Page nineteen, item fourteen, there appears to me to be a contradiction in this finding. It says in the very first sentence that a performance bond is required for parting out landscaping. It says in a sentence further bound, further, if this bond is required, the bond shall remain in effect for a three-year going period. I'd like to have that clarified.
Madam Chairman, Ms. Pease, it is intended for landscaping. I modeled the wording from the subdivision bond requirement, performance bond requirements, which also included paving and that sort of thing. In this case, landscaping is required, so we would want to remove that if required.
Okay, so then that could just start with this bond shall remain in effect?
Yes.
All right, and next, on page twenty-four of the packet, visitor department transportation comments, has, have the two concerns of DOT been addressed? One was that there will eventually need to be intersection improvements at Peninsula and C Street, I'm assuming that that would be handled in a later phase of approval?
That's correct.
All right, and then consider the bike network that passes this property and make improvements to how many bicycle commuters?
Madam Chairman, Commissioner Pease, Louis Schenke is all over this. And I would, a couple of things. One is, there is going to be a sidewalk within the spine road portion of the development. And secondly, there is a trailer sidewalk on the west side of Clatt, excuse me, of C Street, beginning north of O'Malley, C Street, and then Clatt, and continues south, that will, they will eventually all be connecting in some acceptable fashion to both the transfer, to Louis Schenke and to the municipal engineer.
Good. Two more questions, is there transit in this area, and how is transit access to the site, Chair?
I did not address that, I don't know.
No transit will happen out of the site. And we did consult with the lineage transportation, the transit plan, development plan, and there are no routes forecast or planning to be available.
I've read one, that comes from page twenty-six of the packet. The traffic engineer's concern three B, that the roundabout at C Street and Clatt must be in place prior to any C C or C O for construction beyond the first building. We think the roundabout's going ahead, but we, you know, have a transportation budget that may or may not be constrained, is going to be constrained. Staff, is there any need to include this type of language in the conditions of approval so that if the roundabout isn't in place, we aren't stuck with four hundred or more vehicles at the intersection?
Madam Chairman, Commissioner Pease, the comments on page twenty-six are the findings of the traffic engineer on the T I A. Those are his conditions of approval, and we would be accepting those recommendations as written.
If I may clarify this, I need to go into our conditions of approval or by accepting the T I A, or we already covered this?
It's already covered. If I could, Madam Chairman, I think this is an opportune time to just make one comment. If you look at Mr. Kneefel's comment on page twenty-six, it would be three A. I spoke with him this afternoon about that, and exactly could he clarify what that meant? And he told me that that meant that with the first phase of construction, that the spine road and the secondary access out to C Street and Peninsula would have to be constructed. So I think that responds to some of the questions that Commissioner Yoshimura had as well.
Okay, Mr. Weddleton?
Well, that, just following up on that, so now, but that addresses any development on track to A two B. And I think Commissioner Yoshimura was concerned that developments on this A three B were so much that a secondary.
It's tied to A three B.
Where is that access tied to A three B?
Yeah.
I agree. And while you're looking, maybe Mr. Bouteau can answer that. And it seems to me there was discussion of a strip paved connection.
Again, through the, through the chair, there are two issues to consider on secondary access. The foremost above varieties of emergency services access. And we have consulted extensively with the fire department and gotten their guidance on that issue. And again, we're concerned whether the secondary access arises when, again, building height, you know, goes above that second floor, or, you know, potentially some other traffic impact in the future. But essentially, we've run our developments for the phase one and the roundabout, and maybe we'll believe it's our opinion that the secondary access is not required as a public safety measure. So the second issue to consider is, again, traffic impacts associated with potential congestion, and particularly, as a matter of fact, operations on public railways. Again, we subjected the site to a fairly extensive traffic analysis based on values, if you will, traffic generation rates and growth rates for base traffic that were completely consistent with what the traffic department also forecast for, frankly, in most cases we use their numbers, and then supplemented them as our development scenario evolved over time. And again, what we were able to demonstrate is that we will achieve satisfactory levels of service, as they call it, adequate traffic capacity, focusing our traffic onto the roundabout, basically all the way through the development of phases one and two. And then as we get into phases three and four, then, again, if this, as things stand in our development scenario, we are still achieving acceptable levels of service, using the roundabout as our primary and only access. As we move into track A two B, again, the development scenario there at this point is just simply not known, that we start to have, again, we will be required as part of that site approval process to revisit another project, if you will, with a new traffic impact analysis. And then we'll add new numbers, and we'll be able to further understand, you know, how valid secondary access is going to be for serving that site.
Okay, thank you. Okay, one more?
Well, one more, and it ties into this a little bit. In the case S one one seven eight zero dash one, where one of the recommendations is that we approve a four-phase plan. In this case, two thousand nine one fifty-six, recommendation, recommended condition four talks about construction occurring in three phases. And what we're really looking at here is phases one and two. And I want to make sure, are we overreaching by saying, go ahead with four phases, is that an issue?
No, in my opinion, through the chair, my opinion is that we're okay, because again, we're all, whether it's the developer, or the municipality, or the commission, is saddled with that obligation to review the entire site as we move forward with each incremental site approval process. So with, I think we're simply required to kind of think about it, even if we don't deal with it specifically with improvements or recommendations or direction, and just carries forward. So again, my vision on this is, hopefully, we'll have a robust economy, phases one and two will happen quickly, and then, you know, as we move forward in the subsequent phases, we'll be tracking for more site approval, and then we'll be able to review the situations that stands thin, taking into account the way our thinking has changed and has evolved, if you will, since tonight.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Phelps?
Here are questions of staff. Going back to items eight and eleven again, and the question was raised by the petitioner as to whether it was necessary to include items eight and eleven. What's staff's opinion on that?
Well, I think I stood Mr. Bouteau correctly on item eleven, he's only objecting to eleven And not the remainder of those items. Is that correct?
Through the chair, it's not necessarily an objection as much as a clarification, in that simply saying that we believe existing landscaping is satisfactory, and that our intention is not to disturb it, or neither to destroy it nor to supplement it. But again, we certainly have no objection to, again, in subsequent submittals including recognition of existing landscaping and coverage on those, on track C one and A two B, in some graphic format that would perhaps get us past this point.
Madam Chairman, Commissioner Phelps, my intention on eleven is that it apply to each of the fragment lots as they went forward for building permits. And I would accept dropping A as long as, well, no, I would not accept it. I need to have it shown, and it needs to be shown whether it's natural vegetation that meets the standard, or if they're substituting.
Yeah, that would make sense. It says eleven, a revised landscape parking site plan shall include, by thinking when you have a parking landscape plan that's consistent with the results of your review in item ten, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so it should be revised to reflect that, then.
Okay.
So what I'm suggesting is that a revised landscape parking site plan shall include, consistent with the results of the discussions in item ten, the following.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
If I could, I'd like to address the blank wall issue that Commissioner Pease raised. Could Mr. Bouteau briefly describe the grade and elevation changes between the roadbed of, excuse me, Clatt? of, excuse me, CLAT-C and CLAT in relationship to Building 2? It's my understanding, it's, the building sits down into a lower elevation, and so that the back of the building is not apparent from the roadway?
Thank you, yes, particularly Building 5, I believe, 15 feet lower than the location. So yeah, again, drivers coming by on the surface streets, see, in this case, C Street, would be 15 feet above, so unlikely to be looking downward, but, you know, just simply, just don't see what type of distraction going on there. So, and this is sort of typical of a lot of us, so do we have a profile? I apologize, we do have a profile of that, but for the most part, with respect to the gentleman at Apple Public Company a few minutes ago, you know, we need, we need to go south of C, excuse me, CLAT Road and get up on the private properties there, and look out towards the west or to the north, we are looking over the top of our development. So if you were to use it, at least from Oziano and upward, is into the natural setting. And we have to be looking specifically backward into our site to see anything in as, you know, pointed out. For the most part, we won't be looking at the ground. There we'll just be seeing the tops of the buildings and then some of the sides.
Ms. Yoshimura.
I just have a couple of questions back to the site plan. Can you tell me the length of the road through this, for this development?
The full length of the track A3B?
Right. Since I last asked the question, can, have you been able to come up with any other developments, commercial developments, that don't have a secondary egress with a road that's 800 feet in length and serves a maximum occupancy of 800 occupants?
To the chair, I've been pretty occupied, just asking questions as it comes, so, you know, sure answer.
I find this to be an unusual development commercially. I too have been trying to think of other commercial developments that don't have a secondary egress, and I can't seem to come up with one. And so I'm trying to, I guess I need to ask staff, why is this development different? That this sort of situation without a secondary egress is a recommendation for us tonight?
At this point, my understanding is that the buildings are sprinkled, I believe. Second, you'll note that I have no comments from fire. The plat, I don't believe, had comments from fire.
Was that because?
That, they just didn't get, they were involved in many of our meetings early on, but as we progressed to this point, they did not give us comments. But I will restate what I said earlier. It is my understanding from the traffic engineer that he does intend for that secondary access and spine road to be completed to whatever standard that he requires with Phase 1. Now, if that's incorrect, that would be resolved, I believe, with the plat and the subdivision agreement.
Is that your understanding as the petitioner's representative? Mr. Butte?
To the chair, no. Again, when I was preparing the traffic impact analysis, secondary access was included, carried forward simply to, again, as so stated in the TIA, to support the expectation there'd be a three-story building at the south end of the lot for which fire safety required secondary access. However, in calculating my, the distribution of traffic and the levels of service on the roundabout, I assume for these a Phase 1, zero traffic in the secondary access. So again, with respect to traffic impact, the lack of a secondary access does not create an impact for Phases 1 or 2. It's when we get past Phase 2 that we have to start to look at, in which case it's more than likely going to be a desire to have secondary access for other reasons. But again, if we look at the two tests, if you will, that we look at in trying to decide the minimum access points to a site, public safety and traffic capacity, the site is adequately served, as we've understood it by a roundabout. Now, again, to the chair, I just responded to the commissioner's comment to planning about what is special about the site. And again, the answer is that this is going to be, I believe, the first commercial site that is directly served by a roundabout. And as those of us in the community that are doing advocates of roundabouts and are counting on something, and one of the benefits we like in roundabouts is there's a substantial increase in the level of service at an intersection with a roundabout. And again, we looked at this at Ford Road out with traffic that was projected to occur, and with very good economic development personnel brokerage at, at Revolution Mall, and at a one-hundred, which is, I think, a 1% of more growth rate than anywhere in the base traffic rate. So we're looking at significantly more traffic than we have out there right now, with, again, a Ford Road out there, for bust, if you will, up in the development within that site. Again, from a traffic perspective, we don't see any issues, and the traffic department concurs.
Thank you.
I think that's a different conclusion.
Well, we're not going to debate it at this point in time, Ms. Yoshimura. Ms. Pease, do you have any questions?
Well, just on that issue, there's a discrepancy that we, as the commission, will have to resolve, because on page 8 of our packet, the discussion of access says, as part of Phase 1 of Track A3B, this access will be reconstructed, it says reconstructed, as a two-lane strip paved access road, and will extend south through Track A2B. I think that's the access we're all talking about. But then that's not included in the conditions.
Madam Chairman.
Ms. Artur.
If you look on page 15 of the commercial frag lot plat staff report, item number 9 requires the developer to enter into a subdivision agreement with private development section PMNE 4. The first one is construction of secondary access, interior backbone road, and the short spur road to municipal design and construction standards. I think what's getting confusing here is, on the one hand, Mr. Butte is talking about Phase 1, and yet, on the other hand, he's asking that there be no dates connected with Phase 1 or Phase 2. I think that's a little bit where we're getting confused. There may, in fact, be some resolution to construction of Building, what is it, the one in the corner, number 2, that doesn't require that spine road or anything into the secondary access. But going beyond that, there will definitely have, that will have to be constructed. But I don't know whether that condition on page 15, 9A, allows, that's talking about the secondary access, and it doesn't connect to phasing, as we're hearing Mr. Butte talk, which is connected with my condition number 4, I believe it was. Yes. I don't see it anywhere. Okay. Miss O'Brien.
Madam Chair, if I could just talk about the fragment lot site plan that deals with the installation of the public improvements. When this plat is, when this commercial fragment lot site plan was submitted, it was submitted with the showing six fragment lots. Tonight we learned that, well, Phase 1 is the only one we're going to do, and move on for phases. I need to point out to the applicant, Madam Chair, that the fragment lot site plan is recorded. If they're only going to do Phase 1, and they do not intend to construct that spine road to the north property boundary, they will only be able to record one phase tract. The rest will have to be shown as further development. If they record a track plat showing all fragment lots, all the public improvements will have to be entered into a subdivision agreement for the entire six tracks before that can be, before a fragment lot site plan can be recorded for six tracks. So my understanding is, their Phase 1, they're not intending to build the entire interior road, they're not intending to install landscaping for the entire site, they're only focusing on one of the fragment lots. That means that if the subdivision agreement is not executed with the municipality for the entire site, then they will have a different subdivision agreement for only one of the tracks. But ultimately, for completion of all the fragment lots within this site plan that is approved and requested be approved for 60 months, they will ultimately have to build that secondary access, they will have to build the entire interior spine road within this track A3B.
Miss O'Brien, I think I'm getting a little confused now. Is what you're saying, the plat that they're proposing to record would only contain fragment lot 4 on it?
Madam Chair, based on what they're saying tonight, that is correct. If they're not going to commit with a subdivision agreement to the secondary access, the entire interior road, all the landscaping, the spur road from the roundabout, if they don't commit to all of that, and they're only committing to a portion of the public improvements, then they can only record that portion of this entire fragment lot site plan that they are willing to commit to installing the public improvements.
So plat B forest isn't really correct, then?
It is correct. They're asking for, they're asking for approval of this entire site plan, but they're only going to develop fragment, develop fragment lot 4.
Mrs. Chambers is shaking her head yes.
To the chair, this has happened several times before on several different fragment lot site plans. Well, we have phased developments, phased commercial developments, the Tecotno Commons Mall, the Walmart-Sams Club. You have things developed in phases, you have multiple public improvements occurring at different times throughout it. If they want to do the whole thing, then they have to enter into the subdivision agreement for all of those public improvements with the multiple access points, the multiple things. If they just want to do one in one part, they may have to phase the subdivision agreement out as it goes along with the plat. They're requesting approval for the entire thing with a phased approval, but they are not going to be developing it all at one time. This has happened before many times, but as a couple of commissioners have pointed out, those additional access requirements will be required at those times. It makes it very difficult for tracking for staff. We do stay on top of that. Project Management and Engineering has several maps up on our walls, for example, just on these types of phased developments, so they can track when these different things have to occur, when these different connections and subdivision agreement amendments have to occur, and if they do not occur, if these agreements are not entered into, the development goes no further.
All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I mean, I think we are in concert with Ms. Chambers' assessment.
We need to just kind of conclude this. We have a lot more cases tonight. Okay, I see no further questions, so I'm going to close the hearing, and the matter rests with the commission. We need to take action first on 3A1.
Okay, I think this is G1 we're talking about, correct?
Yeah, first, we need to take action on the item that was on the consent agenda, D3A1.
You know, I really have focused on this other one so much, I really haven't gone back to this other one, so I'm not really at the point where I can deal with the first-
Well, that's the order in which we need to take action on them. And that's the most recent one staff was talking about. You can withdraw your motion if you-
Go to trial.
Okay. Are you making a motion, Ms. Pease?
No, I had a question before the motion is made. A procedural question? It's a question that would help guide the making of the motion.
Okay, I'll entertain it.
Thank you. I'm trying to figure out when secondary access needs to be built. I have a concern. On page 9 of the, for plating case, and that is, I just want staff to clarify, it says that there's a license, memorandum of license agreement between the CLAT, Siri, and the current petitioner for ingress and egress between these tracks, but it's not recorded and is not enforceable by the municipality. The license agreement does not secure the future secondary access. And this seems to me to be an obstacle to requiring that access.
Madam Chair, that requirement is addressed on page 14 of the case S-11780. It says, entering into a common access agreement with the municipality on a form acceptable to project management and engineering and the traffic department in recording the common access agreement at the district recorder's office prior to recording a final fragment lot site plan.
And that's common?
Okay.
The municipality has a standard form for it?
Thank you.
Okay, I'm, Mr. Phelps.
Okay, I'm going to go on.
Well, then, let's push the motion button.
So you want me to go ahead with this, then?
Well, Ms. Dean just plugged in to do the motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I apologize, I meant to hit, to second his motion.
Okay, then, Mr. Phelps, would you like to push the motion button?
Oh, I see, yeah.
Okay, Ms. Dean has seconded the motion.
In the case of S-11780-1, a commercial frag lot site plan review for proposed track A3B, baseball subdivision, plating case S-11779-1, subdivision of 1 tract into six fragment lots, I move for the approval of this commercial frag lot site plan, subject to the recommendations given by the department on pages 11 through 17.
Okay.
That would be 14, not 11.
14, I'm-
Madam Chair, Mr. Phelps, are you talking about S-11780?
S-11780.
Okay, the recommendations begin on page 13. Department recommendation, there's an action for approval of the four-phase plan, and then approval of the commercial fragment lot site plan for 60 months. And it goes from 13 through 17. And it goes from 13 through 17.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I guess I wasn't clear, but the recommendations are stated on page 13 of your memorandum and continue by my understanding, all the way through page 17.
That's correct.
That's correct.
That's correct, that's what I intended.
Would you care to speak to your motion, Mr. Phelps?
Um, this is a fairly complex case, and most of the discussion has occurred on the different aspects of this case, including with the commercial site plan. But, in general, what we have here is a subdivision, well, site plan review for a proposed subdivision case that implements a particular type of development in this area. We've heard testimony that indicates that this type of development is generally consistent with the plan for the area. There has not been a lot of opposition to this proposed development within, by the community, that the type of development that is occurring in this area is generally consistent with the land use patterns of this area. And I've also heard considerable testimony on the types of improvements that would be required for the development of this particular type of project. The specifications in this particular, or stipulations in the planning recommendations will essentially ensure that the development of this area occurs in an efficient, profitable fashion. For those reasons, I have recognized approval.
Okay, Mr. Reddleton.
I'd support the motion and would like to add a few findings. One, in response to some public comments, one comment that we received thought this was a rezone, and we just want to note that it is not a rezone of this area. And also a comment on the opposing a roundabout, and the roundabout is not part of this case, but was previously dealt with. And also I'd like to add to the findings, which may be redundant, but on page 12 of the staff packet, they list that proposed use and dimensions of fragment lots meet the requirements of code. So I guess you could add, proposed use and dimension of fragment lots, a commercial tract isn't allowed use in the B3 zoning district per AMC 2115134. The proposed restaurant, retail, and office uses are allowed uses in the B3 SL zoning. Minimum 6,000 square foot lot area is met for all the fragment lots, and the minimum 50-foot lot width is met for all the fragment lots, and the minimum 100-foot lot depth is provided for all the fragment lots. And also note that the petitioner has agreed that, in developing this, that they would pursue the minimum parking requirements allowed.
Okay, Mr. Eishem.
Yes, Madam Chair, I just have a, one minor correction. On page 15, finding, recommendation number eight, they left out the word "plan" after drainage. It's submitting an updated grading and drainage plan showing the permanent, et cetera. And I have one question for Ms. O'Brien. We approve this thing, and Department recommendation B says approval of the commercial fragment lot site plan for 60 months, subject to the following conditions. What happens if all of this stuff isn't done at the end of five years?
It goes away.
Through the chair, Mr. Eishem, they can come in and request a time extension from the commission.
Yeah, that's true.
Otherwise, it would expire, wouldn't it, Ms. O'Brien?
Madam Chair, that is correct. I understand on the site plan, there's not a finalization date, but on a plat, the approval is for a set period. The request for the phased plan allowed them to request the 60-month approval.
And how much extensions can they get? Is that sort of indefinite type thing, drags on and on? Because I've seen some things that have been on for many, many years.
Through the chair, Mr. Eishem, you're quite correct. On some of the very large subdivisions, they do ask for time extensions in 18-month increments. The new Title 21 may allow 24 months, but I'm not sure about that.
And it's often driven by market conditions, and it's very appropriate that people be allowed to come in for time extensions.
My just concern, they commit themselves, and all of a sudden, all this effort goes down the drain.
No, there are opportunities for them to get time extensions. Ms. Yoshimura.
I have a question for staff, and then perhaps an amendment. On item 9A, where it says, "Construction of the secondary access, the interior backbone road and the short spur road to municipal standards and construction standards," it doesn't give a timeframe for that, or a phase. So my interpretation of that is that they would not need to do that until at some point in time of the 60 months extension, is that cor, of the 60 months, is that correct? They would have some discretion in order to, when they needed to complete that backbone and the secondary egress, is that correct?
Through the chair, Commissioner Yoshimura, if they're going to phase or do phases within this first tract, and they're going to develop the fragment lots sequentially, they would have to enter into subdivision agreements to provide the public improvements with the next phase that they want to record and get, and start construction. That's why I mentioned that if the first phase is only the one building on Fragment Lot Four, the subdivision agreement will require those public improvements, and they're planning to only do the public improvements that would serve that one fragment lot, so that's all they would be allowed to record. And then they would have to continue to make subsequent recordings of additional fragment lots and enter into subdivision agreements to improve, provide the infrastructure for those additional fragment lots that they plan to record.
And when would the second, under those circumstances, I'll try to be really brief here, but under what circumstances would the secondary egress have to be installed? At what phase?
Through the chair, Ms. Yoshimura, I believe that that, when they get to the point where they're, you know, going to have all of the fragment lots within this portion developed, that they would have to have that secondary access road developed. It could not be with Phase Three in tract A 2B, because they have absolutely no plans for that. So, by the complete, by the time of the completion of the site plan, that is before the commission tonight, they would have had to commit and build that secondary access.
Okay, then I have an amendment, because I don't feel that that's an adequate timeframe. So, I would like to offer an amendment to the motion, that under 9A, construction of the secondary egress, the interior backbone road, and the short spur road to municipal design and construction standards be completed no later than the, at the, than the third building. And I think that's a reasonable compromise, to give them two buildings, which gets them over a third of the way into the development, at which point in time they would then need to construct the backbone and the short spur and the secondary egress.
Have a quick second.
Okay. Ms. Dean, would you?
Yes, I'll accept that.
I don't see you lit up.
I just pushed it.
You just pushed it. And what did you say?
Yes, I'll accept the amendment.
Okay, so, our maker and second of the motions have accepted that as a friendly amendment. Mr. Eishem.
I, I wonder if we're tying these two things together, or we're tying this, this, this plating thing along with a site plan review, because this particular thing
Doesn't have anything to do
Has nothing to do with any buildings, you know, it has nothing to do with buildings.
It's just a plat.
It's just a plat. So, you know, they could go put, you know, a golf course on each thing or something anyway, but
Then we can tie it to
Maybe time.
The length of the road, we can tie it to the length of the road.
Let's not, let's not get excited, we're right under the table. Yes, we could do, we could do that, perhaps.
Okay, so that would be the third building at the end of the lot to the north of the third building, which would be, how many feet? I don't know, I have to ask the petitioner. I'm going to guess 400, 350. Okay, briefly.
Madam Chair?
Ms. Poter?
If you want, you could tie it to, referring to the, referring to the table on page eight of S 11780, page eight, there's a table. And I identified the lots, and I identified the building number. They're different, but if you've got three buildings, one, two, and three, that would be Fragment Lot Three, Four, and Five. So by the development of lots Three, Four, and Five is one option.
Can you point out those on the map?
Yes? Building number one is Lot, Fragment Lot Three.
Okay.
Building two is Fragment Lot Four, and building three is Fragment Lot Five.
Okay, so by the time you get to the, the construction of building one, lot Three, those improvements would need to be made. I think that's reasonable.
So, is this being offered as an amendment to the wording that we now have passed?
Well, we, that was agreed to by the, to fold in to the main motion.
Okay, so this is a clarification of the main motion?
Right.
Okay.
Did you understand all of that, Madam Secretary?
I don't.
You did, you're good.
Very good. Friendly amendment.
Okay, Mr. Eishem, are you still in the queue?
No. You did what I wanted to do, so.
Okay, I, good. Ms. Pease?
Nope.
You're good. Mr. Reddleton, are you good?
Well, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with that, because I understand the point, but on the other hand, you know, presumably a credible and approved TIA says that it would not be necessary. So, you know, perhaps we could say that it would trigger a new TIA, that we'd have to approve otherwise at that point. So when those three fragment lots are developed, that that secondary road would be required, unless a new TIA, which could, would have new information, it could be five to 10 years down the road, or 60 months, then we might have to do it, I'm just
Ms. O'Brien, can you help us out? We need to move on.
Yeah, Madam Chair, our new TIA really is not reasonable, because the TIA, TIA was based on full buildout of both the six fragment lots, as well as whatever they're creating in tract A 2B to the north of this site. So, a new TIA wouldn't be triggered, because the TIA was based on full development of both those tracks. So, okay.
I'm satisfied with the clarity as provided by reference to the lots.
Okay. Ms. Pease?
Ms. Madam Chair, I'm persuaded by the fact that the well-tenered minds in this room couldn't come up with other examples where a development of this size, which by the third building, we have 600 occupants, does not have a developed secondary access.
Okay, I don't have anyone in the queue. Are there any further discussions on the motion? Mr. Phelps?
No.
Ms. Dean?
No.
Any other findings from anyone? Is there any objection to the motion? Hearing none, that matter is approved. And on plats, there are appeal rights in how many days, Ms. O'Brien?
Madam Chair, within seven days of this action, they would, that would be the same as for the commission.
Okay, except our zoning actions aren't final actions.
But it would be the same as for a site plan.
Okay.
The written resolution.
Very good. Well, the written resolution when it's signed and prepared. Okay, moving on, we still need to take action on
Okay, in the case of public here, the site plan review in accordance with AMC 2115030 to deal with site design for access landscaping screening, consistent with AL 97-150 per tract A 2 and A3 baseball subdivision plat 2006-178, I move for approval of the proposed site plan, subject to the following conditions of approval. Items one through three as stated, item four as stated, except as I may modify, that on A, a detention basin located on proposed frag lot one, delete the remainder of the sentence. On for B, the words "Phase One Construction" would be retained, and delete the following words shall be completed by July 1st, 2011. And on for C, Phase Two Construction, those words, Phase Two Construction, would be retained and deleted, be, shall be completed by July 1st, 2012. Continuing, items five and six are as stated now, item seven would be stated differently. It would be, it would delete the secondary access, comma, the interior north-south spine road, and the short spur road will be designed and constructed to municipal standard and carried out via a subdivision agreement as prescribed in AMC 2115150. Want me to repeat that? Okay. The secondary access, the interior north-south spine road, and the short spur road will be designed and constructed to municipal standards and carried out via a subdivision agreement as prescribed in AMC 2115150. Is that okay? Okay. Eight, the first letter is fine, take out the word revised, and at the end of the sentence, insert shall be submitted, so when the sand strength and peninsula intersection shall be submitted, and period. As part of the submitted, excuse me, the next sentence would be revised to state, as part of the submitted, comma, resolve timing, or the timing for the installation of landscaping with the construction of the secondary access road. So again, going back to the second sentence, it is state, as part of this submitted, comma, resolve the timing for, and continuing. And one, the first sentence would read as it is, beginning of the second sentence, it would read as an option, comma, so we're here again, as an option, comma, because this development is being done as a commercial fragment lot plat. Required plating can be satisfied by shared parking on the entire tract, and continuing as it is right now. So, the second sentence begins with as an option, comma, and continues with because it tackles to, the current parking can be satisfied by shared parking on the entire tract. So, ten would be, maintain the road, as I wrote it, prior to any building permit issue of revised landscape slash parking site plan shall be submitted to the planning department, traffic engineer traffic engineer, and non-moderized transportation coordinator, that, and this is what changes, that ensures that surplus parking, so it takes the word out, the result out, so it makes that ensures that surplus parking, and then insert, they reduced in order to, so the other words, they reduced in order to, and then the word provide, you drop the S, so they reduced in order to provide parking, then it continues to the last part of that sentence. So on ten then, it begins with prior term and continues as it is now stated in ten words, transportation coordinator, then reads that ensures that surplus plan, pardon me, surplus parking, and reduced in order to provide parking lot, and it continues to the end of the sentence. On eleven, the first sentence would read, revised landscape slash parking site plan shall include, and then add, consistent with the results of item ten in this listing. So again, add, consistent with the results of item ten in this listing. And then under eleven A, it would read, interior landscaping, per n, either existing or installed, per n, and then continuing along the east lot boundary of track A to B, and so forth. So we insert those, interior landscaping, per n, existing or installed, per n, and continuing to the end of the sentence. And twelve is fine as, well, there are many aspects of eleven are okay. Going to twelve, that's okay. Going to thirteen, it would read, redesign the parking lot and landscape plan to resolve the internal parking lot, pedestrian walkways, insert bike rack installation, surplus parking, and continues to the end of the sentence. On item fourteen, there's a misreference on the AMC, and what I had is 21.08.060. If I'm wrong in that, sir, can correct me. Item fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, I will accept. On, I would like to add a number twenty-one, it would read, roofing material to be a rock or versatile pattern in a color other than white or black. So let me again, roofing material to be a rock or versatile pattern in a color other than white or black. Then add a twenty-two, and that would read, mechanical equipment, excuse me, rooftop mechanical equipment shall be screened from view, period.
Okay, and Mr. Reddleton, it's second in the motion. Mr. Phelps, when, there was some conversation going on, going through these conditions earlier, on number fourteen, Ms. Pease, I think, brought up on about the fourth or fifth line from the bottom, that the words "further, if this bond is required," didn't kind of true up with the first line in fourteen. And I have those words marked through, "further, if this bond was required." Was it your intent to leave those in?
No, I mean, that is a good clarification, so you'd delete "further, if this bond is required," to say, this bond should remain, if like, for a three-year growing period.
Okay. All right.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay.
I knew we were gonna miss something.
I thought that was just an oversight. And so, Mr. Phelps made the motion, and who seconded it for me?
Oh, I did.
Thank you, Mr. Reddleton. I don't see either of you in my queue, you fell out. I know, I mean, you both fell out of my motion screen. You recorded it. It, it moved it. Oh, okay. And I have Ms. Pease in the queue.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to request a couple of small friendly amendments to item number ten, just deleting the words at the end of that to the extent possible.
I'll accept that.
And what about you, Mr. Reddleton?
I do accept that.
Okay.
And also, on the list of items to be figured out in the number eleven, reserved, revised landscape parking site plan, I would like to propose adding one more, item I, which is to show remnant or underutilized areas to be provided with landscaping or usable common open space rather than asphalt.
I would accept that, add the period, to the extent probable.
Okay.
I accept that.
Okay. And Mr. Reddleton, you're next in the queue.
I'd like to offer a couple amendments.
Okay.
One is on eleven E, and this, it would change the wording just to reflect some discussion that was in the packet, and it would read, all parking spaces will be twenty feet, will be twenty feet with wheel stops, period. And that was agreed to in the document by the petitioner.
Question of clarification, where would that go?
Eleven E.
E.
Just reword it. And there was, there was some discussion that there were some eighteen-foot spaces, and I want to make sure, and it was unclear that they would be consistently twenty, so this is a question. And then I'd like on number ten, to add to the end of the last sentence, as required by title, by the Title 21 rules in effect at the time of permitting.
Okay. Mr. Phelps, do you accept that?
I'm thinking about it. The entire structure of this has been around the existing code, so my understanding would be is that that statement would be redundant. If you wanted to, you could make a general observation that all development required under this site plan shall be consistent with a code existing as of the date of this action. That'd be a better thing to do if you're concerned about that.
That's actually the opposite of my intent, because I'd like to, I think they'll start doing this project after the Title 21 rewrite is largely done, and that would allow them to have less parking than is required now. And I want to make clear that that goal could be.
Yeah, I think you want to state differently, if you want to do that, what you want to state then is that, essentially, parking requirements that may be fulfilled in this site plan, consistent with the revised Title 20 requirements, if adopted at the time of the approval. That'd be my wording.
You mean our approval tonight?
Well, you have the approval of a site plan by the, by the administration. So my understanding, what you're trying to do is that, you're assuming that this is gonna take time to actually get an approval on the landscape site plan, it'll take time to work it through, and as that occurs, there may be the possibility for working through, or rather, adopting, the new parking requirements, and if that's the case, you want to give flexibility to the staff to meet those requirements as opposed to the current existing requirements.
I think this section would let me take it away from this site plan review, but tie it to the building permits, which this section discusses, so that when they go for a building permit.
It doesn't sound like there's agreement, so if you want to propose an amendment that we vote up or down, then that would be the thing to do.
I'll do it that way then, if that, I think, I don't know if, I think it's not disagreement, but misunderstanding. Okay, so should I reiterate then?
You should make a motion to amend.
A move to amend, recommendation ten, last sentence to end with, as required by Title 21.
Are you talking about ten or eleven? You were talking about eleven E a while ago.
Eleven E was accepted.
Okay.
So I'm on ten, which regards building permits and parking and so on. And add to the last, end of the last sentence, as required by the Title 21 rules in effect at the time of permitting.
Okay. Is there a second?
Sorry, I didn't hit the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Eishem. Is there objection to the motion?
No.
Okay. So we need to use our voting machines.
Can I ask, ask, could I get clarification then?
Yes.
That assumes that these rules are going to pass and will be in effect at the time that they actually do or go through the approval. I mean, perhaps you want to say as, if, if they are in effect at the time of the approval, then you can use those rules, but right now, we can't presume they're gonna be approved. It'd be nice to think that, but we don't know that yet.
It's whatever, whatever Title 21's in effect.
That's right.
Right, and that's what I understand, that's, whatever. Whatever one's in effect. And that just makes clear, it's not exactly the parking we're looking at tonight, but the parking that could perhaps be less if they, building three comes up in a year and a half or two years.
And it might not be less, depending on what the assembly does.
Right.
Okay. I don't know if I want my objection.
Are you going to withdraw your motion?
If I could, I would. Well, I do, I don't have a button to push, but I would draw it. But I don't want to withdraw my motion, but, so I want to maintain, it's accepted as a friendly amendment, is that what I, it's accepted as a friendly amendment.
Okay. So now, we're happy. Are we gonna move forward now? Mr. Eishem, you have the floor.
Yeah, I just.
Just a minute.
Mr. Phelps, could you repeat number twenty-two, which you added to that thing? I just missed it completely.
Excuse me, ladies and gentlemen, we have now totally confused our secretary, and she is very good at this. We had the main motion, as it's been amended by lots of friendly amendments, including the last one that the two gentlemen just agreed on, and it's a friendly amendment? Yes. They withdrew the motion, so, yes.
Well, it was offered as a friendly amendment, and.
But I have to tell, that I withdrew my objection.
Yes, the motion is accepted.
Yes, yes. I'm keeping track. It's gone.
No, the amendment's.
No, the amendment's closed.
The amendment is fine. It's been agreed to, yes, yes.
And so, it's approved with no objections.
No objections. So we can go ahead, and now, Mr. Eishem, what are you trying to do?
Just repeat twenty-two.
Rooftop mechanical structure shall be screened.
I just missed, thank you.
Okay. No, he didn't add anything, he was just affirming what twenty-two was. Okay. Ms. Pease?
Yes, I wondered if Mr. Phelps would consider removing the rock of vegetative pattern? I'm okay with roofing to be other than a white or black, but there may be colors or other patterns out there that are inoffensive, and we've sort of taken the position on this commission of not being too prescriptive, and I'm thinking that since you and I haven't even seen the options, let alone the rock of vegetative patterns, we could just simplify that a little bit.
How would you simplify it, by taking it out?
Just saying, roofing to be other than white or black, or solid white or black, rather than saying it needs to be vegetative or rock, because I haven't seen those, and I don't know if there are other options that are subtle camouflage, or, I don't know.
And the purpose is to reduce glare?
Yes, maybe adding.
Could somebody add that to?
Reduce glare or prominence.
That'll be fine.
Mr. Reddleton, do you agree with that?
Ah, yes, I do.
Idea? Anything else, ladies and gentlemen? Okay, hearing none, Mr. Phelps, would you care to discuss the motion?
Yes, I intend to support my motion. The, the commercial site development plan that we've been reviewing this evening, I believe is well thought out. There is a cohesive structure for the entire site. We have a subdivision plat that is essentially ensuring us that the necessary infrastructure will be provided to that particular site, and the purpose of the site plan is basically to provide an overall guidance to the design of this particular area. The changes we have made in the stipulations, I believe, are consistent with the discussions we have had this evening, and that they're more useful in ensuring additional quality as far as the precedent, but also providing to the epic an additional flexibility in development. In general, this project is appropriate at this location. This has been the result of a recent resulting action by the Assembly, and this particular action essentially deals only with the special eliminations identified by the Assembly. It does not deal with the issue of the appropriateness of this particular land use, so we should make that as a note to the motion that I'm making this evening.
Okay. Ms. Pease?
Yes, as a finding in support of conditions eleven and thirteen, I would like to find that the policies of Comp Plan 2020 and Title 21 and its upcoming revisions are endorsed compact, pedestrian-friendly, commercial site development. Ambition to lead standard site in this application requires sustainable site planning. And these policies and standards can be well met by the conditions we've asked for in eleven and thirteen, which would be to eliminate the surplus parking, look at the excess width on drive aisles and parking areas, look at the pair of dement areas, and perhaps the detention area, rattle detention area, to achieve increased landscaping beds, perhaps even adjacent or closer to the buildings, better pedestrian connections, bike parking, and other pedestrian and aesthetic improvements. So I'm glad that we are asking staff to help resolve these deficiencies through the funding of the site plan. We also heard assurance from the staff that the municipal traffic comment regarding the timing of the roundabout is covered under the traffic impact analysis approval, that more specifically, if the roundabouts delayed, there will be some sort of participation by the developer in the traffic improvements necessary at the intersection. Finally, I just have to say that I'm still somewhat disappointed in a site plan that has some very blank-sided buildings on the public street fronts, and that the, a roundabout going right up to the buildings, I think, is not a direction that we're in general trying to go, so I do have some disappointment with the site plan.
Is there further discussion? Okay. I neglected to make a disclosure earlier, and I did at our previous meeting when this, when these two cases were on our agenda, and I just overlooked it earlier this evening, and I would, I will just bring it up now. The law firm that I work for represents Siri, and Grayling is a, as I understand it, Grayling Land Development is some type of a subsidiary of Siri, but I've checked with the attorneys in our office that represent Siri, and we've never had any dealings with Grayling Land Development or represented them in any way, and our work for Siri has been strictly at the corporate, corporate level, so I was assured that I had no conflict of interest when it came to, to this, these cases. And so, therefore, I am participating. And I regularly do not participate in things where the, where Siri corporate is involved, as Mr. Potter can tell you. So I just wanted to make that disclosure, because I neglected to do that earlier. Is there any objection to the motion? Any objection? Hearing none, that matter is approved. That matter is approved, uh, subject to the conditions of approval that have been placed on the application, and there are appeal rights within, uh, uh, I, I don't know if it's seven days, or, uh, I thought it was longer, Ms. Autor.
Twenty.
Twenty. Okay. Twenty days, and that's from when we sign our resolution. Uh, would you be interested in getting back the copies of the TIA or any of the colored drawings since, uh, on the, from our packets? Okay. Well, we still have, um, cases to go. Does, does you folks need a short break? Okay. Five minutes. No more. We'll just go off the record for a few minutes.
Uh, we're gonna, we're not.
Okay. We, we are, um, I'll call the meeting back to order. The next case on our agenda is Item, uh, G2, Case Number G2, um, Case Number 2010-001. The petitioner is William Patton, and the request is for conditional use for a bed and breakfast of five guest rooms or more. Could we have the staff presentation, please?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, 118 public hearing notices were mailed for this item, and in the report, it states that those were mailed on November 4th, 2009. That's a typo. The notices were mailed December 14th, 2009. Minor correction. Um, we've been receiving, um, comments online and petitions right up to the end of the day today, so I don't have an exact count of the responses to the public hearing notices, but there have been numerous letters and a petition in opposition to the request, and we did receive at the beginning of the evening tonight, uh, one letter of no objection from a neighbor. Uh, back at the beginning of October, the Commission might remember, uh, a case somewhat similar. It was an existing house with an existing bed and breakfast operation that filed for conditional use, uh, to have, uh, five guest units. This is, uh, fairly similar. It's an existing house with an existing bed and breakfast operation, and is now applying for conditional use to go up to five units, as is required, um, by that zoning district. The house itself was built in 76. The first B&amp;B was in place in 2002, and that was for three guest units, which is a by-right use in the zoning district. In 2006, the current owners purchased the property, and they are now at the point where they want to apply for two additional guest units to bring the total up to five. Uh, no enlargement of the footprint of the house is proposed as part of this enlargement of units. It will all be, um, uh, an interior renovation. There are, the, uh, there are no specific standards, uh, unconditional uses for bed and breakfast, so we just use the general standards from 2150, O2O, and I'll run through those very quickly. Uh, A, that the proposal furthers the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. This property is located in a mixed-use redevelopment area, as identified in Anchorage 2020, and the property is adjacent to the, uh, Native Medical Center. Uh, in general terms, Policies 10, 11, 15, 20, and 21 in the Comp Plan all speak in one way or another in support, uh, of the proposal. Uh, Standard B conforms to the standards for this title, that is the conditional use review. Um, Standard C will be compatible with the existing and planned land uses in the surrounding neighborhood. Uh, much like the, uh, property from October that was on Upper Hillside, uh, it's, uh, despite the fact that this property is a much more urban setting, a couple of blocks north of Tudor and next to the Native Medical Center, the issues regarding bed and breakfasts in a neighborhood setting are frequently, uh, very similar. Noise, hours of operation, parking, traffic generation, and so forth. However, in, in this case, um, as conditioned, the department believes that Standard C is met and that the proposed use will be compatible with existing and planned uses in the surrounding area. And again, I should emphasize that this area is identified in Anchorage 2020 as a mixed-use redevelopment area and is adjacent to, um, uh, the UMed planning area. Regarding Standard D, will not have a substantial permanent negative impact on the items listed below. Um, number one, pedestrian and vehicular traffic circulation and safety. Uh, the property is at the end of a cul-de-sac. It does have adequate space for the required parking, which is eight vehicles. Uh, traffic generation from a bed and breakfast of this size is not substantially different from a single-family house, a large single-family house, a duplex, timeshare, small motel, or other resort or tourism-type, um, uh, facility of, of this size. Item two, that the demand for and availability of public services will not be negatively impacted. The property is already served by public water and sewer, and the addition of the two guest units is not expected to change that. Uh, Standard Three, noise, air, water, and other forms of environmental pollution. Well, the noise code will apply at all times, um, so will, uh, uh, the air quality code, although there's probably not going to be, uh, any negative impact to air quality. There are no recorded code enforcement, uh, issues with this property, and we do not expect any overall negative environmental impacts. Item number four, the maintenance of compatible and efficient development patterns. The pattern in the area i- is a bit mixed. There are, um, large apartment houses, a long Tudor, and the neighborhood itself consists of duplexes, uh, and single-family homes for the most part. This is a duplex district, R2A. In, in terms of, of, of the impact of a five unit, just looking, uh, in general terms at it, if this property were nothing but a single-family home, and we're now going to go to a five-unit bed and breakfast, we probably would see a, a more dramatic impact, but it already is a home with three B&amp;B units, so it's only adding two at this time. The impact, we believe, therefore, is not quite as great. Because this, the general standards of a conditional use are met, the department is recommending approval. The conditions begin on page 004, and because I came into this case a little bit late and was only able to get a hold of some of the reviewing departments today, uh, I'd like to add two conditions, uh, and I did just briefly discuss with the applicant. Um, Standards One and Two are the same, uh, no change. Standard Three, resolve the affected utility need for an encroachment permit. Uh, when the reviewer wrote that recommendation, she was referring to a small portion of the front of the property where the driveway crosses, um, a utility easement. We don't need a condition for that. Driveways routinely cross utility easements. However, in the back of the property, and if I could refer you to the drawing on page 026, the ASBilt for the property, you will see, uh, behind the house, to the north side of the property, a building labeled one-story frame workshop and sauna. That building is accessed by driving down the right-hand side of the house, as you're facing it, into the backyard, and then onto a trail easement, which is shown along the north side of the property. You can see it labeled 20-foot wide trail and walkway easement. Uh, we do need not, uh, not an encroachment permit for that, but we do need, um, something from Parks and Recreation acknowledging that, that the applicant occasionally has vehicles, uh, that want to drive on, um, the trail easement. So, I'd like to add a new condition, number three. Delete the one that's there, and the new condition three would read, "Resolve the need for a letter of no objection with the Parks and Recreation Department regarding access for vehicles using the trail easement." And I want to add one other. It would be a new condition, number four. This is actually standard, but I would like to have it, uh, in as a condition, because I'm not sure the applicant is aware of it. I didn't see it brought up anywhere else. Uh, the applicant will need to submit an updated interior floor plan of the house and the number of units for land use review, uh, as part of the B&amp;B four-five units. Madam Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Dean.
Through the Chair, my question of Albert is, page 26 has an ASBilt with a lot of dimensions missing. Um, there's a shed that is in the power easement. Um, it is not dimensioned, the shed, or the distances from the, the property lines. There are decks that are not dimensioned, or showing how far they are from the property lines. There may be other things that may be either in the setbacks or in easements. I, I, I think that a fifth, uh, recommendation should be added, that the, uh, petitioner also be required to provide an accurate ASBilt with those missing dimensions.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Dean, I'd have no objection to submitting an updated ASBilt showing all the dimensions. Um, I did look specifically at those items, uh, without land use review. Um, the side yard setbacks in R2 are only five feet, and, uh, most of the dimensions here appear to be at least that, and, and sometimes larger. Regarding the shed in the power easement, uh, it does meet the setbacks, and because the shed is based on the scale it's given on the ASBilt, even though the shed itself is not dimensioned, based on the scale given on the ASBilt, I did measure the shed. It's less than 150 square feet, and it, it, it's, it's allowed there because it's not attached to a permanent foundation, and because it is smaller than 150 feet. Uh, nevertheless, if, if you have a, a better comfort level with a fully dimensioned ASBilt, I have no problem with it.
Through the Chair, yes, I do, because the deck on the south side of the house, it's not dimensioned at all. I have no idea. It's, it, you can go by scale, jungle scale, but there's so many fuzzy things on this ASBilt, and it's been recertified and recertified and recertified instead of redrawn. And it's frustrating that the front of the house doesn't have a dimension. It only has from the, um, not from the overhang itself. Um, there's no dimensioning for the walkway. The deck on the northeast side of the house has no dimensioning either. Now, it might be at grade, I can't tell, but I think from the photos that I saw of the back of the house, I think it's not at grade. I think it's up higher. So, that would definitely be, need to be dimensioned. I, I, I just, uh, I'm just a little scared of the fuzziness, especially since, um, the interior drawings of the home that are on page 27 are, uh, equally fuzzy. Um, and then, uh, page 25, it shows the, the parking area is pretty fuzzy, too. I, I'd like to see something a little more concrete, especially if it's, you know, so, um, important to the neighbors. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Ms. Yoshimura.
Through the Chair, my question, uh, to staff is, how does conditional use, um, match current, uh, building requirements for, um, driveways? In other words, I think there's, uh, if you were to get a new construction permit, you would not be allowed to have your entire width of your lot at that cul-de-sac be an asphalt, and I have noticed from the photos that it is a fairly unattractive streetscape. Um, how does conditional use interplay with all of those other requirements?
Uh, Madam Chair, Commissioner Yoshimura, well, as a conditional use, under normal circumstances, you could make anything to do with landscaping, the driveway, et cetera, uh, a condition of approval. Uh, specifically for the driveway, in this case, the driveway is grandfathered as to its width. So, there is not much we can do with that, and I was looking for the page, because I believe the, uh, the non-conforming determination, the grandfather writes letter, is in here somewhere. Uh, page 28. Evidence indicates the driveway was in place prior to 1983, the violation of the two-fifths rule concerning driveway entrances. Driveway width, in other words, is a legal non-conforming characteristic of use and is governed under the non-conforming section of the code.
Thank you. Ms. Reddleton.
Um, I think you stated that it, eight car, or eight parking spots are required? Is that correct? Yeah, looking at this picture from the front, there's four cars in there. It'd be hard to imagine fitting four more without everybody having to juggle cars every time they wanted to go somewhere.
Madam Chair, Mr. Reddleton, juggling, yes. Uh, I, I did walk it with traffic. They've been out to look at the driveway, and they're satisfied that you can fit eight legal parking spaces. Um, nevertheless, condition number two, a recommendation, condition number two, is show it on the ASBilt. We want to see the eight spaces dimensioned, but just from a casual observation, it does appear they can do it.
And, and one, just further, you compared this to the B&amp;B we looked at that was on hillside, and that was a very different one. It accessed a major road, so car traffic really didn't impact the neighborhood at all, and it was on an extremely large lot, too, which mitigated some of the problems that were seen in these comments.
Okay. Ms. Pease.
Through the Chair, Mr. Barrett, with regard to the request to allow, um, vehicular access along the trail easement, does that assume that the vehicles are going to go down the side lot line of the property, um, and then onto the trail to get to the shed in the back? Or would this assume that the, um, owner can bring his vehicle down the trail from some roadway, or crossing of some kind?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Pease, my understanding is that, uh, the applicant can do this all on his own property. He doesn't have to come in from any other location. Come in right off of the end of the cul-de-sac advance, uh, move down the east side of the house, staying on his own property, and then into his backyard and onto the easement to get to the, um, the building labeled, uh, one-story frame workshop.
And did you verify that? I'm just asking, because the dimensions, it's hard to tell, again, with the decks and so forth, but the dimensions along the lot lines look tight.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Pease, yes, I've walked it. You can do it. It's snug, especially in the winter, but yes, you can do it.
Thank you.
Okay. There's no one else in the queue, so at this time, I will, um, invite the petitioner or his representative to come forward. And would you like to reserve, you have a total of 10 minutes. Would you like to reserve any of your time?
Yes.
Tony Battle?
If it's needed, yes.
Okay. Uh, how much would you like to save?
The remainder from my very brief presentation.
Okay.
Madam Chair, Commissioners and staff. Madam Chair, Commissioners and staff, we are the Patons, and good evening. This is my wife, Carrie, and I'm Barrett. We operate the three bedroom Bed and Breakfast at 3036 Vance Drive in our home. We are requesting authorization through this conditional use process to increase our three bedrooms to five guest rooms. Our property backs up to South Central Foundation and A and M C campus. Patons Place Bed and Breakfast caters to medical travelers and their families, most of whom come in from the Bush, and most of whom come to A and M C for medical care. We are alcohol-free, drug-free, smoke-free, clean, safe, and quiet. Our proximity to the hospital and Carrie's UPEC language and cultural background make Patons Place quite attractive to Bush medical visitors. Majority of our people arrive from the airport by taxi, and very few of them have cars for use in the city, very few rent cars. There is abundant parking space on the facility for certainly five extra cars from our family needs, and there is space for nine cars in the front of the house and in the garages. Many of our guests rock back and forth to the hospital. Our mission is to provide year-round, clean, safe, and affordable housing for medical travelers from Bush Alaska, including those with low incomes and with Medicaid funding. This is especially important in the summer, when hotels charge very high rates and Medicaid is not accepted by the vast majority of clean, safe, and quiet hotels. We could collect those very high room rates through the summer, but we choose to remain loyal to our mission and available to our Alaskan clients who have medical needs throughout the year. Our request for five rooms relates to the above-mentioned patient needs, and also to our own financial needs, in light of my upcoming retirement from a very long career of providing health care to patients through A and M C. Also, our family is maturing, and we have no space available in our house. Occupancy rates have been very good in the summer, and renting three rooms means that we turn away many people who will have a great deal of difficulty finding housing because of their Medicaid funding. In six quarters of operation, we have paid well over $15,000 in bed taxes to the municipality. We see substantial increases in those payments of bed taxes as we become buttyman through Alaska as a very good resource and anchorage, as my retirement allows more time to devote to the business, and if five rooms become available, to give to guests. We very much appreciate this opportunity to pursue our goals through your conditional use process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there questions from Commissioners? Mr. Reddleton has questions for you.
Thanks for your presentation. We got just this evening quite a list of comments from neighbors and so on, and generally they're in opposition to the operation. Do you have trouble with the neighbors? Have you read their comments? Do you have responses?
No, we haven't had trouble with the neighbors. We've been very cooperative with the neighbors. One neighbor on one side expressed to me that she doesn't like the taxicab traffic, and she would like to see it not go to five bedrooms. Another neighbor on the other side said he's perfectly happy to have it happen. Neighbor's father, Laura, I haven't spoken to about it. It's been a very quiet, low-key operation, but taxicabs do come.
Ms. Yoshimura. Is your microphone on?
Thank you for your presentation, and it's nice to know that affordable rooms are being provided for Medicaid patients. I do have some questions regarding the appearance, and I'm not sure that there's anything one can do about it, but I am curious, do you have a dumpster here in your driveway? Is that a dumpster? As well as the garbage receptacles?
No, there is no dumpster. The picture is quite old, it shows three garbage receptacles, it shows a camper for a truck, which is there now, but is scheduled to go to another parking place off-site. There is a riverboat in the driveway that's not parked there, but it's there back in October of '08, but it's not there anymore. And there is no dumpster.
Okay. It's the riverboat I thought was a dumpster. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Isham.
Yes, Dr. Payton, do you have any problems with providing an updated ASBelt and interior drawings of the house?
No, I don't. It'll be an expense, but we'll provide that. The ASBelt was requested from the people who do originally, and I hired them to do it, and they provided me with that update. The interior drawings are off the blueprints from the remodel of the house, and I thought they were quite clear, but maybe they just need to be better copies or something like that. I mean, what's in here is, you know, probably been copied multiple times, but I think what we're talking about is just a little clearer things with dimensions so that they know the distances and things like that. Okay, we're very happy to provide that.
Okay. Are there further questions from Commissioners? Ms. Pease, Mr. Reddleton, you've already had a turn, and I'll get back to you. Ms. Pease?
Yes, Dr. Payton, one of the concerns in some of the written comments was the allegation or the assertion that some of the residents cross private property to access the Tudor Center. Is there a path on your own property that goes directly to public property that people can use?
There is a path on my property that goes directly to the public trail system that can go back to Tudor Center completely by public trail system. There's also an alternate path that crosses onto my neighbor's property, and then onto Tudor Center property, and that's the way I go to work in the morning, when I left to work. He has been perfectly happy with that access, and I doubt very much that he has written a letter saying that that's not good. He's told me he likes to have people using that access.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Reddleton.
One of the stipulations regards the shed in the back, and that you may have to drive on the trail to have access. How often would you be driving on the trail to access that shed?
Not very often, and that's only me driving down, it's my workshop, my hobby workshop. And I drive lumber down, I drive garbage out, and all of the driving is on my own property. I spoke with Parks and Recreation about this before I made that access work, and got assurance from them that it was perfectly fine as long as I stayed on my property and I didn't damage the trail system, and the trail is on my property. He checked with his supervisor, and I have the memes of both of those people in my files at home, but I don't have them here, and his supervisor said that that was perfectly fine as long as I'm driving on my own property and not damaging the trail, and that if I do damage the trail, I rectify it. So that's been the situation, and we've been using that access for two years, and it's been quite satisfactory. We don't do it in the winter, essentially. The last time we were on it was probably a month ago, and we use it in the summer to get in and out with our projects.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Phelps.
I was reading information about your lodging, and it indicates that currently, because you're a provider at A and M C, that they qualify for, or you qualify for Alaska Medicare and Medicaid, excuse me, and the NALI Kid Care. Is that still going to be the case if you're no longer a provider at A and M C?
Is that what? What, sir?
The question is, when you retire and you're no longer working at A and M C, will still qualify, or the lodgings still qualify for Medicaid and NALI Kid Care?
Yes, there's no connection between my work at A and M C and our accepting NALI Kid Care and Medicaid in the house, in the Bed and Breakfast. I actually had to go to the legal department at A and M C to make sure that it was okay for me to operate a Bed and Breakfast as a separate business with Medicaid funding. And the legal department at A and M C looked through that very carefully and said it was fine, as long as I didn't advertise through my work. So I never talk about this at my work, and the patients who come are never there because of my work. Occasionally I get surprised and I see a dust in my house, and the next day I see the same person in clinic, but it's all just accidental.
Do you ever inquire of me about dumpster work and everything we put into trashcans?
Do we ever have a need for a dumpster? Can you anticipate? We have that in construction, but we can handle it through the trashcans. Occasionally, when I have a lot of extra things at the house, I put them in the pickup truck and go to the transfer center.
The riverboat that we saw there, was that yours or was it somebody else's? The riverboat that we saw in the picture, was that yours or was it somebody else's?
The riverboat in this picture is mine. There was another boat that was my son's, they're in May and June of this year, and it's going to Bristol Bay for his fishing operation. But this is my boat here, and it's not packed actually in the back.
Let me ask you a question. Would you be opposed to a stipulation that precludes the use of dumpster dumpsters, and also precludes the storage of vehicles that are not used either by you or by residents in the facility?
No, I have no objection at all. Thank you.
Any further questions from Commissioners? Apparently not at this time. You do have six minutes of rebuttal time available, and after the remainder of the public testimony, I will call you back up, in case you have additional comments you wish to offer.
Okay, that's right, I didn't have to add anything now.
No, you don't.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the public hearing is open, so I'd like to invite anyone that would like to testify in this matter to come forward, please. Please step.
We need a motion to extend.
We will at 11:30. So just a moment, if we're going to need to have a motion to extend, now would be the time.
I'm going to extend this to midnight.
And I have all sorts of people jumping on. Okay, it's been seconded. Is there any objection?
Yes.
Let's count noses. One, two, we better use our voting machines. We have.
Whoa. Fail. Yeah?
Okay, so one.
Motion fail.
We need to vote again. I hate this thing.
That makes three noes and, oh, you had no objections, so four, five yeses and two noes.
Five yeses and two noes, so we are extended till midnight. Otherwise, you have to stop in about five minutes. Yes, sir, would you please state your name for the record for us?
My name is Marshall Williamson, and thanks for the opportunity to give me a chance to testify here. I own four properties with my wife in Castle Heights, two duplexes and two residences. I also have a working relationship with two other duplexes in the neighborhood representing six properties. I've been a resident in the area for 30 years, over 30 years, so I've seen many of these operations come and go, good points, bad points. I provided a petition for you. I have over 20 respondents, virtually 100% of the people I've talked to, a few have no objections, but virtually all of them are recommending that you do not approve this conditional variance. There's also a condominium association in the area, representing 20 condominium owners. I did visit the board there, and I have six petitions from those owners recommending that this variance be not approved. The petition basically addresses the things we talked about before, traffic, noise, litter, clutter. There is a clearly marked no trespassing sign going to one of the access points that the doctor mentioned on his way to work. That does cross condominium, I mean, office condominium complex, and I did visit with those people, too, and they indicated that the traffic there is problematic. I have two properties that if you go directly from that breach straight ahead, you cross my properties, the ones that I own and one that I manage. What happens to this property when Dr. Payton leaves, and also his next door neighbor leaves? The next round of owners might not have the same values. I admire his position and what he's given, but again, you are giving a variance that moves when the property transfers. And this is a very important note from most of the people that I've talked to as far as their viewpoints, because it impacts rental income and it also impacts property values for the long term. All of us who bought property in that area have a contract with the state to, or the city, to keep the R2 zone covenances. We look at that as a contract, we hope that the city will, and your board, will honor We respectfully wish to keep the zoning that way. We please deny this conditional use permit.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Williamson? Ms. Pease?
Yes, have you ever filed complaints about any of the problems you have experienced?
If I have, yes, I have.
What code enforcement?
Code enforcement, it goes back six years, when they started merging hospice-type systems similar to what Dr. Payton is managing. To be honest with you, it's not operated as a Bed and Breakfast that I'm familiar with, it's more like a hospice-type operation, depending on parent subsidized, money's coming in, not your typical Bed and Breakfast patron who pays by credit card, you know, as a tourist or whatnot. It primarily is associated with the hospital. There is a need in the neighborhood, but again, we have zoning requirements that hopefully insulate us from that situation.
If I may, I'm going to ask Mr. Barrett in a minute if he has any included in the pack, and maybe I missed it, the record of complaints, but your letter mentions specifically abusive parking situations and sign violations. It mentions other things, too, but those in particular, could you?
I will defer to sign violations, and my feelings are good, nothing. Sign violations are attributed to not properly identifying the place as a Bed and Breakfast. It just says something like Payton's place, and so it is a misleading type of sign. I will... I will back off on that, and I'm going to pass that on at our next committee meeting to say that the sign violation is not a significant issue.
And what about the parking situation?
The parking situation is, is bad, based upon my observations and the terms. Again, the parking situation, I defer to what the traffic people say, but you're operating on an expanded situation, the whole front end of the property is exposed for parking. And of course, we have some unused vehicles in a camper shed and things like that. The temptation for those spaces, again, deter from the attractiveness of the neighborhood.
Okay, thanks. I guess what I was trying to get at, has there been parking in the cul-de-sac or blocking other people's access or drivers or fire truck turn around or anything like that?
I can attribute it directly to Dr. Peyton, but like anybody who lives in cul-de-sacs, the temptation when you have parties and, you know, infrequent type situations like that. To be honest with you, if it's with the residential area demand, that seems appropriate. When it's a commercial enterprise bringing in additional traffic, I think that that's a little bit over the top.
Okay, thank you. And Madam Chair, could I ask if Mr. Barrett has, could you recommend anything in the packet about complaints on record?
If I may speak to that, because I, when I went to planning and zoning, I asked if the stuff, that my records that I passed on?
We need to allow Mr. Barrett to answer the question.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Pease, as I say, I came late to this case, so there is nothing in the package, but I did get a response this morning from code enforcement. I did ask three other people in code enforcement to look into this with me, and the most recent thing they could find in the computer was from two thousand and three and was actually a construction violation from code abatement. I don't have any of the details on it, but apparently some changes were being made to the house itself, and they did not meet code. But two thousand and three, it was prior to the current owners anyway, so don't have anything more than that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Barrett. Ms. Yoshimura.
Where I live or the properties that I own, I'll just tell you, the properties that I own on Vance Drive are on the corner of Vance and Bishop, just, just to the south of the subject property. The property I manage is right next door to that. I also own a property, the last duplex on Vance Drive, as you head north and then east before you get into the residential neighborhood. I own two residences on Castle Court.
Okay, that answer your questions, Ms.? Okay. Mr. Eishem?
Hi. And you realize that if we disapprove this tonight, all this means is that he can't expand from three to five?
I understand that, yes. And again, the impression is five or more, and my concern long-term is when Mr. Peyton leaves and the property gets transferred, if you can get antrophoners in the area whether we really look at that or more situation with a made-by-groom residence.
Okay. There don't appear to be any further questions for you. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to testify? Then please come forward.
Good evening, silence passed my way. My name is Kevin Gottlieb, and I work for South Central Foundation. Our company prides itself on trying to be a good neighbor and work with the community councils, and the corporation actually has no, no opinion on the petitioner's request. However, there are a few things I've heard tonight, and so I'd like to just add a little more information. We own all of the property adjacent to, adjacent to this, adjacent to the petitioner's property. If people, it is customary that people trespass and they go to the hospital from this property over condominium. There is a condominium in downtown, it's not adjacent, there is no reason anybody would know need to walk across the condominium property. We're the majority owner of that condominium also, and we've never heard a complaint from condo board about it. I have never had a complaint of, of traffic coming across our parking lot, pedestrian traffic, I've never heard of it. And I wasn't aware that Dr. Peyton had a bed and breakfast. I knew he lived there, but I didn't know he had a bed and breakfast until I sort of noticed for this meeting tonight. So, thank you. Good night if you have more questions.
Okay, Mr. Riddleton has a question for you, sir.
So you're, the South Central Foundation owns single-family homes?
No, 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 we are to the west of Vance Drive, so we're the owners of about half of the Tudor Center, the medical complex.
Okay, but not the homes?
We own nothing on Vance, no, none of the homes, none of the duplexes.
But you own, majority owners of a, where's this condo?
There's a condo, an office condo on Tudor Center. It's just one of the many buildings on, on Tudor Center.
And is that the condo that had complaints?
I'm sorry?
Is that the condo that had complaints in our packet?
Some have just testified to that, that they don't let people cross their own property.
All right, thanks.
Sure.
Thank you for coming out tonight, Mr.?
My pleasure, thank you, Madam Chair.
Uh, Dr. Peyton, you have six minutes of rebuttal time. You may come forward if you have additional comments you'd like to offer.
Madam Chair and Commissioner, I'm appreciative of hearing the comments. I'm surprised by the neighbor comments. I have met Mr. Williamson briefly in the cul-de-sac, and we had friendly conversations. I have never heard a complaint like this from anybody, and it surprises me. I'm puzzled by his reference to hospice, and I couldn't understand when he said that this is more a hospice than a bed and breakfast, and it sounded like some low-class slam thing that he was referring to, and that didn't sound like it made any sense at all in our application. I don't, I'm not aware of the conditional use, the moving on through addition numbers, but that's neither here nor there for me at the moment. This is our, our plan is to live here for the rest of our lives, planning to live past a hundred and, and enjoy my life in this house. And I've invested my life in this house, and I want to be of service to our community, and would like to see this bed and breakfast provide for patients coming in for medical needs at the hospital. I don't consider this a threat in the neighborhood, and we have ample parking on our premises for a few cars that are needed. The unsightly camper in the front yard is scheduled to be gone. There's another camper in our neighbors' yard that I don't object to, and that I doubt if Mr. Williamson has any, any power over. So I'm very comfortable with what our plans are, what our motives are, what our mission is, and I think it's a good opportunity for the property to be of service to the community and benefit through the community, and we would be appreciative if that we're allowed to go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Phelps has a question for you.
We've heard a concern about what may be taking place in this structure in future years, and I really don't know what would be happening there, but there is this concern that change might occur in the future years. So I have a question that is concerning the, another stipulation of approval, and the stipulation would be this, essentially the conditional use approval would be for a period of five years. It may be renewed, but at the end of that five years, it has to be, you have to come back to planning commission to get it renewed. That would be acceptable? Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Riddleton?
I wanted to just clarify something with Mr. Barrett. This says that this is a conditional use for five guest units, it's not five or more, is that correct?
Madam Chair, Mr. Riddleton, the, the code reads that a conditional use is required for five and more, but this specifically is for five, and Dr. Peyton will be submitting a floor plan of the building for five units. Goes to six, it's another conditional use.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Pease?
Yeah, I just have one question from Dr. Peyton. Is the, to your knowledge, the pedestrian access reserved anywhere onto the medical campus near the trail, the public trail? You mentioned that people can cross your property only and get onto the trail. If they follow that trail, it's really hard to see whether that trail scopes the edge of the medical campus and whether there's a place where they can literally cross a pedestrian easement onto a roadway or a sidewalk on the campus.
My understanding is that there is a trail accessible from our property that's a legal dedicated trail that goes across Chester Creek and then down to University Lake. There's a bridge of that trail that does not cross Chester Creek and goes west along the south side of Chester Creek and next to the fence for South Central Foundation's daycare center. And that leads to a public access, a dedicated public access that was granted by you about two years ago, I think, through a public hearing, that goes south again to the middle medical center. And that's dedicated public access, and it goes directly from our property to dedicated public access to the medical center.
Okay, thank you. I'm a little bit familiar with the trails, and that sounds about right to me, that there's a trail on the south side of Chester Creek, parallel to the property, the medical property. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions for the, Dr. Peyton? Apparently not. We'll conclude our business here, so I will close the hearing. Did you have a follow-up question?
Not for him, but for staff.
Okay, Mr. Phelps?
Mr. Barrett, what's your condition, this conditional use for a five-year period within the, is that correct?
Madam Chair, Mr. Phelps, yes, absolutely, no different than a gravel pit. All I would ask you to do is specify the type of review for the renewal.
Right. And would they have to pay an application fee to come in for that five-year, you know, for a re, a review after five years?
Madam Chair, there is a fee for minor amendment, yes.
Is it the same as for a full application?
No, no, it's six fifty or nine sixty, something like that, the application.
But it's not the thousands of dollars like a?
This one was fifteen hundred because it's residential, so, no, it's substantially less.
All right. Thank you. Okay. All right, I'm ready for a motion. Ms. Pease, seconded by Mr. Phelps.
Yes, in the matter of case twenty ten dash zero zero one regarding the conditional use for bed and breakfast, I move for approval with the department's recommendations on page four of our staff packet, and I'll go as follows. Delete the current staff recommendation three regarding the utility, and per staff's recommendation, provide a new condition three, which is to resolve the need for a letter of no objection for the owners to use vehicular access to their shed by proceeding along the twenty-foot trail easement. A new condition, which would be number four, to submit a floor plan, dimensional floor plan, to show the rooms of the interior. A condition number five, to require submission of a new ASB with all dimensions meeting municipal, and, and meeting municipal standards for an ASB. And a condition number six, which is that the conditional use shall be effective for five years and may be renewed as a minor amendment by review of the planning and zoning commission.
And that's been seconded by Mr. Phelps and Ms. Yoshimura.
To the Chair, I'd like to add another amendment, finally amendment number seven, no boats, motorhomes, campers, dumpsters, or non-working vehicles shall be parked in the driveway.
Accept, do you accept that, Mr. Phelps?
I will.
Okay, Mr. Phelps, you're next in the queue.
Yes, on the revised number three condition, I believe we want to add in there for review by parks. That was requested by staff, and you did not mention the review by parks.
Acceptable.
Okay. What I would also ask is that we add another condition, that is no trash receptacles other than those associated with residential uses are permitted.
Okay, Ms. Pease, do you agree to that?
May I just ask, Mr. Phelps, have we not covered that by prohibiting dumpsters? I don't know what other kinds there are beside residential trash receptacles and dumpsters.
Is that a different commission, condition than I missed it?
Ms. Yoshimura had included that in her condition number seven. At least that was in the driveway, but I assume there wouldn't be one in the back anymore.
Well, that's usually where they're parked for pickup. Okay, so that, you don't need that condition eight then?
But I would like to add another one, although somebody else has added already, it's kind of late. It'll be?
And we only have ten minutes.
Okay. All onsite vehicles should either be owned by the owner of the building or shall be users of the site.
Should be what?
Or should, all onsite vehicles should either be owned by the manager or shall be used, or shall be used by residents of the site.
Hey, Madam Chair, I'm just hesitating because we haven't, I don't, did we hear testimony that there's third-party vehicle storage or use there?
Well, what we heard is that people are concerned about there being inappropriate use of this area, and one of the ways that we can assure that we're not going to have inappropriate use is by this condition. It basically says all the vehicles have to be associated with either the owner of the structure or by the user of the structure.
So either by the guests or by, by the owners?
Yes, it's, I, I don't see that it creates a problem, I don't see that it buys a lot of, it's acceptable to me.
Although, well, what about visitors though? Visitors, that, I mean, they have a life, this is their home.
Yeah, the owners' visitors should be able to park there too.
They're visitors to the site.
So basically, our amendment is that there won't be any storage of vehicles?
Yep. Yeah.
In a way, I think I've sort of covered that by saying non-working vehicles, because usually what happens is that a vehicle is non-working for some reason, and it just sits in a driveway over a long period of time, so I think it's pretty hard to regulate visitors.
I think they've covered it.
Yeah.
We don't want to be restricting legitimate uses or kids coming over or something.
Okay, withdraw the motion.
All right. So, Ms. Pease, did you have something else? You're back in the queue.
No, just to speak to the motion.
That's great.
We've heard testimony tonight about the operation of this bed and breakfast, and I think that many of the concerns expressed in the public comments have been a lot in my mind. We didn't hear particulars about abusive parking linked to the operation of this bed and breakfast. We didn't hear of major sign violations. The trespass, it appears, may occur with some sort of consent of adjoining property owners. However, there is, as we heard in testimony, legitimate public access easements, there are, I should say, public access easements that link directly from this property to the pedestrian pathways of the medical center. By adding some additional conditions, I believe we have helped to avoid future problems with collateral or excessive storage in the driveway, the dumpsters, there will not be dumpsters in the driveway, which would affect the residential character. And we've put a condition on this, a five, lifespan of five years with possibility of extension, so that the operators can demonstrate that they are good, quiet neighbors. And finally, I would just say that it's probably really important to note that we do have a similar bed and breakfast that was, as Mr. Reddleton noted, on a much larger lot. I don't think this is parallel to that. Approval that this bed and breakfast operation has, we're at our standards for approval as a five-unit bed and breakfast for five years.
Okay. And Ms. Dean?
Madam Chair, I'm not going to support this case. I feel that going to essentially a seven-plex, because it's already a duplex, when it's already essentially a five-plex in a neighborhood full of duplexes is really a burden on the neighborhood. I feel it's too much, and I'd like to keep it where it is at a, at a three-room bed and breakfast.
Are there any further comments? I will, but, Mr. Barrett?
Madam Phil.
Is it unusual for staff to comment when we're in the middle of voting or having our debate?
Yes, ma'am, it's just in regards to Ms. Dean's last comment. The property was a duplex, it's been converted to a single-family home with five units if approved. So Ms. Dean had said seven units total, it would be six units total.
Okay. Mr. Phelps?
Yes, I intend to vote for this. I had concerns about the project initially. Frankly, I have a similar situation as this in my neighborhood, and I don't find it a particularly good neighbor. That said, I think that this is, from out of the surveys, that it's okay and a good location. If the stipulations that we're adopting or approving for this particular case should ameliorate some of the concerns that otherwise I would have, for these reasons, I'll support it.
Okay. Are there any further comments? Well, I would just add a couple of comments. I am going to be supporting it also, and I was troubled to hear the objection of the condominium owners in particular, because what I think the condominium owners own is interior space in their units and not anything out exterior to them. And besides, these people that are walking over onto that property that's owned by South Central Foundation, they're just going on, it sounds like they're going on trails and right-of-way that exist just to get to their medical appointments. And I think this is a very good place for a facility like this to provide housing and an alternative lodging facility for people coming in from rural Alaska. I know what it costs to stay in even low-cost hotels, and then you have to factor in transportation to get to those facilities. It's not inexpensive, so, and I just, I just don't have any qualms about adding two extra bedrooms to this situation. It's really not any more people than if you have a very large family or multiple families living in one house. That's my comments, and we have about two minutes left. So we have objections, so we need to use our voting machine, Madam Secretary.
Just finishing your comment.
Okay.
Okay, go for it.
Okay, so we need to vote. That motion passes with Ms. Dean objecting, and there are appeal rights within how many days, Mr. Barrett? Is it 20? 20 days from when we sign our resolution?
Is that calendar days or workdays?
I check with staff. I'm not the official counter.
Do we have the official put on that?
Yes, and we now need to quickly postpone those other cases till next week. That would be G3, G4, and G5.
So moved.
Second. Okay, is there any objection? Hearing none, those are postponed to next week's agenda under old business, unfinished business. Motion to adjourn would be heard.
So moved.
Is there any objection? There's no objection, we're adjourned, we just beat.
I didn't even catch it. I know Nancy seconded it.
Well, my eyes don't remember.
Who moved that?
Save our, save our stuff.
Save our, save your cases for G3 and G4.
G5.
G3, G4, G5.